All right, good evening. Welcome to the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 12th. We've been in a work session, so we don't need to open the meeting, but we should stand for the pledge, so please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, time for the president's report. For those who've watched us all year, you know that I always start our meetings with some gratitude. I've said from the beginning of the year, I think it promotes the right mindset for whatever conversation we might be having. Sometimes I've spoken about kids as scholars or athletes along with our coaches. I've talked about the faculty and the counseling departments, facilities, and on and on. But what I haven't done up to this point, and I'm going to do tonight, is express gratitude for our community. And the reason for that is, believe it or not, most school boards and districts around the country, and given my professional work, I have some experience with this, struggle to get any engagement at all with their community. We don't have that here in Chappaqua, and it's something to be grateful for because engagement is how we get better. And here, people share their thoughts, they email us, they call us, sometimes they attend board meetings. And when people, when I tell people that I'm on a school board, most people's reaction is, whoa, you must take a lot of heat, you must experience a lot of angst and vitriol from people. And that is also not my experience here in Chappaqua. With very few exceptions, everybody's super respectful even when they have a very sharp critique to offer. And that is also something to be grateful for because if we're going to improve, we need to be able to explain our differences of opinion about things and be able to move forward. So, that's my gratitude for tonight. I hope we can keep that going for the remainder of the year. Thank you for listening to that brief interlude to start us off. Our agenda for tonight, I mentioned we did a work session that was about special ed. We have a retirement coming up, and so we have a chance to think about leadership in the area of special ed, so we were working on that for a bit before coming in here. And the main focus of today, since it's March, is to continue to dig into the budget proposal for next year. So, we'll be getting some additional detail about specific aspects of the budget. If I'm not mistaken, this curriculum and technology, special ed, athletics, things of that sort. After that, Dr. Ackerman will provide a community update, including feedback we've received about International Day at Seven Bridges. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ackerman. Oh, sorry, we need to do the calendar first. My mistake. I miss this every time, Lisa, I'm so sorry. We are making a small adjustment to the calendar. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the revised 2024-25 district calendars, 1.1.1. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
So, just so folks know that we're adding a day back. Christine, can you clarify what we're giving back and why?
Right. So, so far, we haven't used all of our allocated snow days. And so, what I am proposing tonight is that April 21st become a snow give-back day for our students and our 10-month staff. That would be the Monday following April break.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, there you go.
All right. So, I'll send that out to the community tomorrow morning in a separate email so everyone can start to plan. So, now, we're going to turn it over to our presentations this evening. So, we're going to start with curriculum instruction. And so, I'd like to introduce Adam Pease, our Assistant Superintendent, and Andrew Taylor, who will then move into technology. So, I think he's going to take Andrew Cristelli's seat, and we're going to begin.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. So, I'm here to present the curriculum and instruction budget. As Dr. Ackerman mentioned, we'll have technology that follows that, and then cascade a series of reports. So, curriculum in a district is what we teach and when we teach it, instruction is how we teach it. So, that's my department. What we teach, when we teach it, and how we teach it are the main components of our curriculum and instruction budget. We use these same guiding principles. I know that these are not new to our Board of Education, but this is really what drives our entire budget requests through the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. We used to have the profile of a Greeley graduate, but you'll remember, it used to be in that logo that was round, and we've updated that more recently as part of our strategic planning work to the student literacy. So, in curriculum and instruction, we try to take these literacies and drive them into our curriculum and instruction. Yes? So, we've updated our profile of a Greeley graduate to those student literacies, and these are the things that really just drive our, drive the expenses and the expenditures in the curriculum office. These are our departmental goals, and just to highlight a few pieces, innovative teaching and leading through inspiring professional learning, rigorous instruction, powerful, relevant, culturally responsive curriculum is our goal. All right, and these are our strategic priorities. Again, I won't read through them, but I know you've seen them before. Here's our major curriculum and instruction priorities. Again, I won't read through the entire slide, but these are things that we've discussed with the Board of Education. Our pre-K program was new this year, so we'll be going into our second year of that. International Baccalaureate Exploration, our K4 literacy program, FLESS stands for Foreign Language in the Elementary Schools, so the launch of that program. And these are things that are, have been kind of our guiding, guiding strategic planning priorities as we build this budget. We don't do this work alone. We've got three fellowships this year, and my budget also supports the stipends that are attached to these fellowships. We have a Strategic Planning Fellowship, Science of Reading Fellowship, which is guiding our literacy work, and our District Equity Team that you can see there on the bottom. That is, those are the memberships of those teams. We've got district administrators, building administrators, and our faculty all involved in those fellowships. And here are some things that the curriculum budget supports. Modern curriculum, there is a new biology regions. Many of us took biology in high school, and then it shifted to living environment, and then they've made some adjustments to life science biology, they're calling it. So, that region's exam is brand-new in June 2025 this year. We've been teaching that course actually for two years now, but it's the new assessment here in June, and you can see the other things shift in classroom libraries, implementation of the new K2 literacy units, Haggerty Handwriting Without Tears, some of those things over the last year, and continued implementation next year. Our professional learning experiences, you can see, I listed a few of them that have the fellowships there, but also our first-year teacher program. We have mentors that support all of our first-year teachers, Apple Professional Development, Literacy Professional Development, regional and national conferences, and in-service courses are some of the things that we access for professional development. We have a pretty extensive support program for our new teachers. They're new to us, they're often not new teachers to the profession, but there is a shift in many cases as they learn about our community expectations with regard to teaching, learning curriculum, and they all are assigned a mentor. And we have regular monthly meetings with our new teachers and our mentors to onboard and make sure that we have a successful incoming class of faculty. We start that actually in August, a couple of days over the summer where they come in. So, these are our new teachers for, from this year, new to us, that is. And you can see some of the conferences that we also support through the budget. I just pulled a sampling of them. There's actually more than this, but this gives you a sense of the breadth of this, anything for, anywhere from Teachers of English Conference, Teachers of Mathematics, all the way down to School Public Relations Academy, for example. It's about homeschool communications, for example. So, you can see a sampling of some of those conferences that we've supported attendance at over the last year. In-service classes are courses that are run by our teachers and leaders for our teachers and leaders. So, here's a sampling of our in-service classes. There's a small payment attached to those for teachers, or they can gain credit as part of the participation, and then we also pay the instructors, instructors, since this happens outside of the school day, that's all contractual, and you can see a sampling of those in-service classes from this year up there. And we also support authors and author speaker visits and some visits to outside places. I know for our leadership team and the Board of Education was able to participate in our trip to New York City when we visited Apple and Bloomberg over the summer. Also, we have Gravity Goldberg there, so our budget supports things like that as well. There's a little delay with the clicker, and I'm afraid when I click it twice, then I advance two slides. So, I apologize for that delay, but we also, we also support a variety of professional learning books. Again, we just pulled a sample of some of the books that we use as part of book clubs and different professional development experiences from this year. We also support special events, conference days, unity days, PTA programming partnerships like Cultural Enrichment for our elementary school with the PTA, Environmental Education, and we partner with the PTA for that, New Teacher Orientation, and you can see the list there. All right, so let's get down to the actual numbers. I've got two, basically, my budget is a rollover budget for all intensive purposes, except for a couple of things that I wanted to call out. So, basically, I'm just, we're going to work within our means that we worked in last year without any increases, so I won't go through all of the lines, but certainly if you have questions, we can field those. You do see an increase of $16,000 in contractual. That increase is really allocated mostly towards the world language in the elementary school. That line can help us pay for consultants, professional development, curriculum writing time, and things like that. So, you'll see an increase there in contractual. There is going to be a salary request. We'll go through that as Josh goes through more detailed budgets as we go forward for those positions that we're going to recommend, but this is kind of to support the implementation of world language K4, and the hope is that we can implement that in the fall. And then you also see an addition of a line that we're calling IB contractual. IB stands for International Baccalaureate. We are moving the life school over to an IB model, and we're exploring International Baccalaureate to see if it's a good option for us K through eight, and there are some costs associated with that, attendance in conferences, consultants, dues and fees, things like that. So, you see that IB line. So, those are the two increases there on this slide. And again, if you have questions, we can go back to that. I also have a part of my budget that's called regular school. Again, you'll see the variance is zero, so there's no increases there. We do have enough, as we go through our literacy audit, we are thinking about what that may cost to implement, you know, to pilot, to make some shifts there. So, I do have some money allocated, but I think we can work within, or I know we can work within our means that we have already allocated in these lines that are here. And then there has, had been some board discussion previously about title grants, so I did want to share with you federal money that is passed through the state and the history of that, like how much money we actually get from the state that comes from the federal government. You can see over on the right side, the allocations, and I put the allocations over time. So, Title 1A is to support academic achievement of disadvantaged students. It's basically related to socioeconomic status, and you can see that although that one year was zero, we've hovered around like a high $60,000 to $70,000 for that, and that's been pretty consistent. We don't, we try to budget that money in a way that if it were taken away, if a year went to zero, that we wouldn't have to like, like, we wouldn't be eliminating staff or something like that. So, we try to be careful and thoughtful about how we allocate that money. Title 2A is to support professional development. We use that for consultants and also to support our in-service program. Title 3A, you can see, is for immigrant education. We had gotten some money in the past, we haven't gotten money in more recent years. Title 4A is earmarked towards STEAM, safety, and/or technology, and you can see that that's pretty consistent at the minimum, which is $10,000 for school, it's $10,000 for school districts generally, but you can see prior to that, we didn't get any money there. And then the universal pre-K program is actually a per pupil allocation. That is based on the amount that we are granted there is based on our 36 students that we have in pre-K. So, that's a per pupil amount. If you take that number, divide by 36, that's what we get per pupil. We are actually allocated more than that. If in future years that money stays in, then we could increase that number, and the hope is that per pupil would also track, but we're, we're not exactly sure about that. We haven't had any commitments from the state or federal level just yet, but our hope is that that money will be intact for next year, and we can continue that program. So, this is just a summary. We went through the details of these slides, so those are the major headings on the left side, and that $61,000 is the $61,000 I described for the IB and the FLESS. That's the increase. So, that's just a summary slide. So, overall, it's an increase in my budget for 60, up $61,000 is the variance. So, that's my last slide. If you have any, I'm not sure if we should take questions now, or if we should, okay.
So, I'll ask one. I imagine people are reading in the news about things happening at the federal level and wondering what it means for the district. So, just to reiterate, you mentioned on the prior slide where you're looking at the title slides that, you know, we have relatively small investment of money coming, and you mentioned when you were talking about 1A, we could cover it if that wasn't an issue. Do you think that's true for everything here, or where would it, where would it break down if it would?
Yeah, I think, I think the one that would be really challenging for us is if we had our pre-K money pulled from us.
That's what I was.
The title money, you know, we, we actually don't get our allocation for '25, '26 until after our budget is built. So, we build our budget so we can live within our means there, and then this is kind of additional funds that we can use to enhance various parts of the program. So, I think, you know, honestly, it is nice to have this money, it is real money, it's not, these are not large numbers. There are some districts that pull in half a million dollars, a million dollars plus in Title 1 funds, but we just don't have that, that demographic to be able to pull that money in. So, we're actually, we have some safety in that we really don't, it's not a large percentage of my budget or our overall budget.
Josh has also prepared a slide in the community update to talk about federal funding holistically, so we can also address it at that point, too.
Perfect.
My question, that's probably kind of similar, so do you want me to hold it, or?
Well, we, we have a slide in the community update about all our federal money that we have been talking about as a follow-up to your last budget presentation, so we can wait to that time, we can talk about it now. I just, I just wanted to share that we had planned to revisit it in that moment.
If you just ask it, Hillary. Okay, I'll just ask it, and if you feel like it's easier to answer it later, it's probably a fairly universal question, which is, it seems to me from what I'm reading, which could be wrong, that the proposed potential cuts or withholding of funds aren't necessarily going to be impacting this coming year so much as the subsequent year, like that the cuts would be next year for the year after? Or, and maybe that's wrong, but I guess part of my, what I'm wondering is, as we're not only building this coming year's school budget, are we thinking about putting protections in place that if the money that maybe we do get for '25, '26, then does not come for '26, '27, are there any protections we can be putting in place to make sure that we're not then making cuts at that point to things that at that point may seem integral and beloved? Like, I wouldn't want us to, to build things in only to have to, to cut them if the money disappears.
Yeah, so the answer is yes to that question, right? So, Adam, and I could talk about that, Adam talked about the slide here about the grant money that he builds in after that really isn't the real federal money that comes as a pass-through but directly to us is in special education. And we do write, we do write three and a half FTEs and then one and a half psychologists into the budget as part of 611 and 619. We have written in one additional position into the budget this year to reduce that number that goes into the grant, to start to add that into our general budget as opposed to the grant, so that we could begin to think about scaling that back, and so that if there are things, so that we can do along with that. And then, we also budget significantly less in our excess cost aid than we normally receive, so that goes into fund balance. So, that as we start allocating fund balance, we have that in the fund balance for the next school year in order to, if something happens in the next school year, because we're reading the same things, that it's not next school year, but the school year after. And the state is beginning to respond, so there was just a proposal for the state to double the per-student allocation for UPK. That is in the legislature now, it hasn't been voted, but it's in the one-house bill for the Education Department budget. So, as we're thinking about this, the state is also thinking about this and how to begin to isolate school districts from federal funding cuts.
May I suggest, David, can you refresh the presentation, and Josh can do those slides right now since we're talking about that? I moved them out of the community update. So, can you just hit the refresh so the new slides pop up?
While we're waiting for that to happen, can I ask a question about the title grants page? Oh, nevermind. I'll ask it later.
It's right after the summary, Adam's summary, I put them there. Okay, here we go. Go ahead.
So, this is a very similar slide to what Adam just showed, showing that we receive $133,000 in our title grants, broken out exactly just how Adam showed in the title grants and how they're separated out. I also want to be clear that these are allocations. There are times that the barrier to receive those allocations doesn't apply to us, and we don't always get those funds, which is why Adam shows some zeros in previous years and the $10,000. So, those are all things that are allocated after the budget that don't affect us, if you want to go to the next slide. So, our 611 and 619 grants and our Medicaid reimbursement, which comes after, this is the bigger amount of money that we receive from federal, right, the $800 and change thousand dollars, plus the UPK of $194,000. So, here is where there's a little bit more money that we receive, and if you go to the next slide, you could see, just to show you that those ESA-funded programs, those titles are 0.09% of our budget. The special ed funding is point, about a half a percent, and then UPA is about 0.1%. Just to show you how small of a percentage of our budget that is, many school districts around show between 5% and 8% is what the papers are showing, that is generally federally funded. And then this is to answer, Hillary, your question. In '24, '25, we allocated $927,000 to those granted programs. This year, for '25, '26, we were able to decrease that to $805,000 to start to say something might be coming, and let's begin to isolate our budget and our programs for that. So, showing a 13% decrease of those, of those funds without changing the staffing, it's just we're moving those funds from those grants into our general budget.
I think Josh answered that. I was talking about the blank spaces where we had zeros, and you basically just answered.
Yeah, so sometimes when we apply for those, the, the amount of money is too low, and then we have barriers to apply for that, that we're not able to access those funds, especially when it's something as small as $10,000. And then we, we can't apply for them, but the allocations are still there and in our runs. It's the same way that our UPK shows over a million dollars of allocation, but we only can access $196,000 of that allocation.
Thanks.
Adam, as it relates to the literacy fellowship, do you feel comfortable with the allocation that you have if we perhaps have to move in a direction that would require us to sort of shift our professional learning and perhaps add some curriculum materials?
Yeah, I think we, I think we'll be fine, certainly for a pilot or like a smaller-scale implementation. The literacy programs that we've looked at already, we're down, we've narrowed, narrowed things down to like four finalists, and one of them, if we were to like implement full, fully K4, I think the quote came in at about $470,000, which would, would not, we would not be able to cover that easily. We would, it would basically like, we'd have to pull everything out, so we'd have to do that over a couple of years, which would be, I think, the right thing to do anyway, regardless of the cost of it, just in terms of being able to provide that level of professional development and support for the faculty and, you know, attention to rolling it out the right way, let alone the shift for the students when you're in one program for, you know, almost five years, and then your, your shift programs. It's, it's not easy for the students either, so typically, a district would phase in when they can. But I, you know, our, our plan is perhaps a pilot some next year, and we can, you know, have the funds certainly to do that. But that's, that's a larger conversation for next year as we think about, you know, what, if we make some large shifts and how quickly we want to adopt it, we could be talking significant amount of money.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam.
I had, oh, sorry. So, back on slide nine, I know this is just going to be like a little question. I know I noticed Handwriting Without Tears into grade two, and I know that I've heard from parents before, do we have anything in our district that's like formally with regard, in regards to typing? Because I know, like, it's sort of like you have to be sensitive about this topic, just because it's like, we, we do a lot of screens, and it's not always great, and, but then, if we expect kids to do their writing, you know, on their computers and all of that, we, I feel like we kind of, is our responsibility to teach them typing, but do we have that embedded, or is it not? It's, it, it just seems like it's sort of like differs depending on the classroom, depending on the buildings, and so I, if you could explain that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so we do subscribe to a couple of programs, a typing tutor and a typing agent program that basically teaches like a typing game and teaches students how to type. I will say, it's an area that we could do better. We don't have like a typing scope and sequence, we don't have expectations or pacing with regard to like when we introduce, and we basically have advised the faculty or asked the faculty when there's a little bit of downtime in a classroom where students might have some free time, they can, you know, jump on one of the typing game, you know, typing games. It's basically, you could think of like Tetris where the letter fall, the letters fall, and they type the letters to make them disappear as opposed to, you know, stacking up on the bottom, and things like that. But, you know, it's, it's an area that I think we probably could do better at with regard to getting students to type, because I do see some of, you know, many of our middle school and high school students learn how to type kind of on their own, and in some cases, it's creative ways, but I still see some middle school students and high school students, you know, kind of with two fingers, and I even see students typing like an essay on their phone because they're faster with their thumbs than they are with a keyboard. So, I think it's, it's certainly an area that we could do better.
No, I think that would be wonderful, just because I think if we're asking students to do something, I think it's in our best interest to provide supports for them. That's sort of the same across the district, and that it's not, it differs depending on which class you are and how much free time that class has or you have. I type with four fingers, but I'm just saying that this would be appreciated. The other thing that I wanted to say was, slide 14. Wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, all right. I don't know what slide. Okay, I don't know what slide, because now the numbers have changed. About the foreign language, we're doing the foreign language in elementary school, which I am so excited about, but I, as I said before in meetings, I want to really understand what we are planning as a district to do with figuring out how we bring Mandarin to the middle level, because Mandarin is the only world language that is not offered 5, 6, 7, 8, but is offered in the high school. So, I really want us to, I know it's hard to find teachers, and there's a lot of challenges to that specific language, but it is one of the hardest languages to learn, and to have them start in ninth grade and be able to be successful in AP Mandarin is, is just impossible. So, what are we thinking there?
Yeah, so, we're, right now, the strategic plan, our, this is our first year. We're focusing on developing a world language program for K4. Next year, we're looking at the middle level and what that looks like based on our K4 scope and sequence that we're currently developing. And part of our work right now is we're actually going out to different high-performing middle schools and talking with them about their language program, and we're bringing those ideas back to the strategic planning team, and this will be an area, middle school collectively, but specifically world language, that we'll be focusing on particularly for next year. And then after we work on the middle school foreign language curriculum, we'll transition to high school.
Okay, so, I understand that, and I think, I guess my confusion or not understanding is that I'm not sure what we're doing, which language we're choosing for elementary.
Do you want to talk about?
And then, and then, I'm sorry, and then, if we are, I kind of want it to be like sort of simultaneously happening, just because if it's not Mandarin, first of all, if it is Mandarin, why are we doing K4, and when we don't have it in the 5, 8? But if it's not Mandarin, then we're starting another language, whether it's Spanish or French or Latin or whatever, then now there's another gap, that we're going to not have it, Mandarin's not going to be present in the lower level. So, do you understand what I'm saying? So, I'm just, I just feel like there's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of people who want to take it, but because it's, it's a very hard, difficult language, and then I also know that the enrollment is pretty low, and I, I think it just kind of all goes together, and I think, again, if we could support it at the middle level, then you would see a rise in the number in high school.
So, we have a task force that's kind of a broken-off group from our strategic planning group, the members of the Strategic Planning Fellowship. We've broken up into task forces, and I kind of lead the one with the studying world language. And that task force, as part of that, we've interviewed quite a few like directors and teachers from the area, from school districts that have languages in the elementary schools. We've learned a lot from, like, recommendations from them. What, what they, what we heard from most, if not all, districts was how important the teacher was that's teaching the language, and to post the position as world language in the elementary school and see what you get for your pool, and find the right people, even if it's multiple, whether it's multiple languages or it's one language with multiple people with that same language, it's about like secure the talent that are, that's going to get, get students excited about learning language, and the language is, is less important. That may not be the case for us, but is less important than it is like getting the right people to build the right program for you, so kids are excited about it. It works for your school, it's supported by your community, because that's really the only way that the program perpetuates in their opinion. And then the second part of that was that they said it, it didn't, when they picked their language, it didn't impact their middle school numbers the way they thought it would. There was a lot of fear in many districts that if they picked one language, then that would be the end of the other languages once the students got some choice in middle school, and it turned out not to be the case. So, that doesn't, that doesn't negate your point about, you know, if Mandarin is not in the middle school, and it's not a choice, students have to choose it when they get to high school. So, that's something that we'll, some decisions we'll have to make as we get down the road. But at this point, that, that was our plan, to go forward with posting, a general posting, see what we get in terms of the applicant pool, and then trying to pull the best, like the strongest talent out of that pool and building the program around that talent. And then trying to pull the best, like the strongest talent out of that pool and building the program around that talent was going to be our approach.
And in one of the slides about the I V contractual, that I just want to clarify that it's not the I V diploma program. It's the I V career pathways program, which is one of their newest programs. And I learned that not too long ago in terms of, I know when most people think of the I V program, it's really the diploma program that you guys are thinking about. But they have many, many programs and this is their newest program, right? Is there? Is there a conversation happening around maybe at some point we would consider the I V diploma?
Right, so we are right now exploring whether or not we want to expand. The I V approach K through ten. And so we're in conversations around. The curriculum. Increasing understanding across the district and then also going out onsite visits and visiting I B schools, which some of us were able to participate in this morning. I think that we would first begin there and then we would talk about. Through our feedback from staff, whether or not we'd want to consider moving to an eleven, twelve model. Because that would be a significant shift for us. It would impact our A Ps. There'd be a lot of discussion around whether or not that makes sense for us as a school district. So we figured that in our strategic plan, our eleventh and twelfth year didn't come out as a focus for us in terms of rigor. But K through ten did. So that's where we were going to start the conversations.
Thank you.
All right, I think it's over to Andrew now.
Right, so now the technology, instructional technology budget. Welcome, Andrew Taylor.
David, could you put Taylor?
You have to just move it. Okay, great.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm really excited to tell you about some of the projects we've been working on and to tell you about the twenty five, twenty six budget. Last year, when I came here to talk to you, I talked a lot about business continuity and services and how we can ensure that within Chappaqua. And I and I presented to you this three-phase approach that we were working on. Phase one, looking at the internet access and two is looking at server migration and looking at the phone systems. I want to give you an update on some of those project projects. So in phase one, we talked about the land and WAN services and how we were going to improve the every access point, change every access point, switch router and wire throughout every building for the land services. This past year, we finished that project. We also went on and did the the WAN services. Remember the WAN is. WAN is the connection we have between our buildings and our connection to the world. We upgraded that to a hundred gig connection between buildings and to the world as well. So this means that every every connection between every classroom, between every building and out to the world has been been changed. I just want to take a moment to say. Kudos to the technology department and the actual team and the lyric team who did this project. There was literally tens of thousands of hours that went into this project, over hundreds of people. And the fact that the district really saw no really interruption of services was a pretty, pretty big task. The other project that I mentioned last year was a server management project. And I talked about the fact that we needed to decommission some old servers and we were going to move some of our servers to the to the lyric cloud. This project is currently ongoing. We've decommissioned all of the servers that we needed to. And we're currently, as we speak, migrating servers to the lyric hosted environment. This is going to provide us better data security for better reliability for our and better backups for our our servers. I also mentioned last year, our need for a better communication system and looking at a unified communication system, which was a hybrid system between online and hosted and and local premise applications. We've did the R F P for that service and we've bid it out and we're actually in the final stages of completing that that bid process. And this summer, we're going to be implementing the new phone system. One of the things we realized this year when we were doing this project is that the phone system is really tied to our security system. So we've been working together, Josh and I have been working to make sure that those systems not only talk together, but they actually work well in conjunction with each other. So last year, when I came here, I talked about this being our current network as of last year. And I talked about this is the network that we wanted to go to, which had this double redundancy and had our our off campus hosted servers. Double redundant VoIP system and double access to the internet. So far, as of right now, we've completed all of the access to the world. And and within the next year, we will have completed all of these projects. When I talk about technology, we're not just doing infrastructure. We're doing a lot of work still in the classroom. Here's some of the projects that we've been working on. I talked last year about the the migration to the the MacBooks in seventh and eighth. That project is complete. We are now completely one to one, seven K through eight. We also talked last year about the need to upgrade our view sonics. This year, we've we've upgraded over eighty of you sonics in the classroom. That's replacing old smart board and aging equipment for every classroom. So every classroom has either a new Ben Q or view sonic board. We are also working on some fun projects in steam still. We just had our steam review with with Tri-State. This is one of the projects that we're working on, which is an electric car project in our high school. These are some of the students working on the electric components of the car. This is the actual car itself. I'm working on the chassis of the car. And this is the teachers at training when they, that's what the car will look like when it's complete. This is actually funded partly by the C S F. So really thank you for them for helping us fund that project. And it's part of a of a more robust initiative and sustainability, which really looks at electrical vehicles in general. We last year integrated some electrical vehicles at the middle schools as well, where students are creating electric goat carts and three wheels and two wheel devices as well. This is another program that we've been working on. This is an A P course this year that we launched. Nick Ritter is teaching this course and he really has redesigned the A P curriculum to really integrate. The Raspberry Pis and Vex robotics equipment into the into the class. Which really was had had a couple purposes, and this is one of them. We really were hoping that this was going to spur more people to join our our robotics team. This year, they're starting to compete for the first time in the robotics team in the first robotics competitions. This is just this past weekend where they competed and won rookie of the year award. They have twenty people that they can bring to the competition, but there's seventy students on the team. Another instructional product that we're looking at is all the large spaces like this one. We're looking at how can we standardize the equipment in all these large spaces so that anyone can walk in and use those spaces very fluidly? Because it looks very similar across the district. Talk a little bit about the budget for next year. So when we put in the budget together, there's a couple of areas we like to focus on cybersecurity, of course, being one of them, the education law, two D, the device refresh and the infrastructure upgrades. This is the overall budget. One thing I want to point out is right here, the shift from our contractual line to our Bosse's line. There's over a million dollars that we shifted from that, from those lines. That's to cover some of those initiatives that I mentioned earlier, like the WAN and the LAN projects and some of the support that we are getting now through the Bosse's in the lower Hudson Rick. Overall, our budget is a is down point two nine percent. This is just a little bit different. Here you get to see our leases and how our leases play out over the course of years and how and the difference between our just district budget versus Bosse's budget. This is the leases over the last couple of years and going ahead two years. One thing I'd like to point out here is that we are looking at a lease for this year, which will cover the cost of the phone system. And you'll notice that there's three leases going off next year. That's where we're going to actually be able to start doing some of the replenishment of future for the the devices that need to be replenished in the in the next couple of years. You'll notice that in in the budget, there's a shift from seven hundred and seventy nine thousand to one point six million dollars in our aid for this year. That is because Josh and I have been really able to work together in some of the WAN and LAN initiative, some of the shifts that we've done to Bosse's services. And the in and offsetting some of our technology services through the the Bosse's to get that additional aid. We're expecting that aid to go up next year as well, when we add the phone server systems, the phone services and the hosting as well. So that. That that actualizes as a nine hundred and five thousand dollar increase in state aid for next year. Just to say that that state aid actually goes into the district's general budget. It doesn't go in the technology budget, but I thought it would be fun for you to see what that would look like if there was a revenue line inside the technology line. And as a revenue line, that would mean that our budget went down for next year twenty eight point nine nine percent.
Thank you, Andrew. That's your last slide.
That's my last slide. Any questions?
I was just curious to go back one and just the, you showed what aid increase we're going to get this year. And then it it flattens out. So we're not going to do as well next year, but I just wanted to guess at what that was, kind of thinking like Hillary was thinking about next year.
I'm not sure where my slides went.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, what was special? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you notice you have that nine oh five there showing the savings. Like if you did that for twenty five, twenty six to twenty six, twenty seven, we're not going to do as well.
No, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. There are a couple of variables that we have to look at. We are looking to move some of the phone services to there as well. So our pots lines would be located at the at the Rick, which gives us some additional savings. We don't have the exact final figures for that, but I would gather that it's probably going to be an estimate of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more that we'd get in the coming years. But again, those are rough estimates. We'll have to get some more figures as we build out those services. Phone being the biggest variable right now.
All right.
Okay, so this is the leases and you said that we're going off of leases.
So you'll notice in the last line, twenty six, twenty seven, there's three areas that we've we've we're going off, which is a, is I think around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which of the leases are going off lease that next year? We're going to need that to do our replenishment of devices. We have a lot of aging devices, especially in the initial iPads that were one went out about five or five years ago, that we're going to start to replace as part of that initiative.
So you often have to go into new lease agreements for the.
We'll have new lease agreements, but that that so we'll our lease line, our our goal is to never make the line go up at all, kind of keep it steady. And do that through long term planning. So we're planning out three, four years ahead, what our replenishment needs to look like. And by doing that, we can say as this lease goes off, while we can afford to do these two grade levels and replenish those devices. So that's our goal. With that funds there, we'll replenish at least two grade levels and 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 start to rebuild our 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 student devices.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll invite Karen Smith to come in and Jamie Edelman will present the P P S budget.
Good evening. For the last four years, Karen and I have been working together on the initiatives and professional development to enhance services for our students. We're happy to be here this evening. This budget presentation always ends up being a little bit of a celebration of work that we've done and a little bit of a preview of work that is going to be ahead next year.
Jamie, maybe a little closer to the mic for the audience, yeah?
It should be on. Maybe I just need to bring it closer. Okay. So in Chappaqua, in both the district and community, we're committed to an inclusive setting. While also maintaining a commitment to placing students in the least restrictive environment. We focus on supporting students in class with their social emotional development and in the community and programs outside of school. We're constantly considering students who are placed outside the district and working on ways to return them to Chappaqua when appropriate. When we think about the current school year, some of our priorities were ways to enhance the programs that we have here in the district. This year was the second year that we made a shift from resource room to learning center in our high school. And it was a first year that we made the same shift in our middle school. This year was our second year of integrated co-teaching in our middle schools. And we continue to support our teachers as they hone their skills in providing co-teaching experiences for all students in their class. We have social skills training for our students in elementary school. And we are in the second year of a two-year training process for D B T. For all of our school psychologists, social workers and counselors. And they have all been utilizing those skills and strategies with groups of students during the course of this year.
Jamie, can you just explain what D B T or just not use the acronym to save things out so people know?
Sure. D B T is dialectical behavioral therapy. And there it is a method of helping students and people to. Manage their emotions, to develop their interpersonal skills and to develop stress tolerance. This year, we also during our E S Y program had a class for all students who needed support in living environment and algebra. So those were high level courses that had recently been added to our middle school. And some students needed a little extra time to master that content so that they could challenge the Regents exam. And so we offered summer programs for that, for both of those areas, for students, both with I E Ps and general education students. So. In a minute, you're going to see a slide or in a second, you're going to see a slide of when I talk about some of the celebrations. We were able this year to increase the amount of consultant teacher time at the elementary school level. So we went from a. A maximum on I E Ps of two hours per day to a maximum on I E Ps of two and a half hours per day. So we were really excited that we were able to do that. We were also able to assign a teaching assistant to every consultant teacher classroom in the elementary schools. So if you think back, there might have been a T A in a classroom if a child had a one to one with them. Instead of structuring it in that way, every single classroom that had students with I E Ps with consultant teacher on it. Had a teaching, has a teaching assistant with them all day. So that even when the special ed teacher is not there, there was, there is someone there to support the students with I E Ps. We've also done a tremendous amount of work on our multi-tiered system of support. And you might remember several, I think it was months ago at this point. We purchased an online dashboard called branching minds that helps to streamline that process. So that we can give students support as soon as we see that they need it. And the dashboard helps us keep track of the interventions that we're putting in place and the data that we are collecting. Again, another mention of D B T dialectical behavioral therapy at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. And we were also able to offer a five hour daily E S Y program for our students who need. Education and instruction and life skills. So that was new this past summer. So. For the past four years, when I started in this position, we had just had an audit of the special education program. And they made a number of recommendations that served as the roadmap for the work that we've been doing. These tend to be repeats to some of the accomplishments that we celebrated on the slide before. But I think it's important to mention that we were able to strengthen our programs in ways that the audit had suggested. So for example, we have a multi-tiered system of support framework in place. We also have a leadership team in place that's taking the lead on this work. And it includes both administrators, teachers and service providers. We. Work really hard to utilize assessments to drive instruction to help us make thoughtful decisions about programs. I E Ps and goals that are written on those I E Ps. The audit had recommended that we create a special education manual, which we have and distribute to our faculty each and every year. It is updated each and every year with any changes that are necessary for them to know about. And a really key area of recommendation on the audit was parent engagement and communication. And that's something that we have, we meet with our parent leadership every month. We have an autism parent group. We added an open house at the beginning of the year. So we have put in place lots of ways for parents to interface with us and to engage in the district.
Thanks. So these are some of the priorities that we have for the twenty five, twenty six school year. And in our department, we don't necessarily create or work on new initiatives all the time. Sometimes what we do is we strengthen and deepen the work that we do with current initiatives. For example, the multi-tiered system of support, which Jamie talked about earlier and the use of branching minds. We've increased the leadership team and we're going to continue to use that leadership team and then extend training out to our staff. So that our staff can use the data dashboard, working with students. And so that the data that's available for the current team will. And so that the data that's available for the current team will be available for subsequent teams when they work with students as well. We're going to extend the extended school year life skills class from five hours daily to five and a half hours daily. And that gives us the opportunity to continue to work on transition planning for our students. As well as vocational skills, self-care skills and academic skills in that in that summer school program. We'd like to begin to explore integrated co-teaching and the opportunity that we might have to offer that at the elementary school level. Now that we've solidified that both at the middle and high school level. We'd like to take a look at being able to offer that level of support for our children in grades K through four as well. What that might look like and how we might implement it. This year, we want to create and start a transitional support program pilot at Bell Middle School. And I think we'll talk about that in a subsequent slide and talk about the importance of offering this kind of support. This social emotional support to children at the middle school level. As well, we're just continuing to offer professional development around progress monitoring, around differentiated instruction and around assessment. We continue to work on our parent engagement and communication, meeting with families, meeting with the special education PTA. And partnering with them on different initiatives like the National Inclusive Schools Week that we do annually, the first week in December. And we've worked with the clinical team who are really excited to start to share this dialectical behavioral therapy out with their colleagues. And they've already started to do that within department meetings and faculty meetings. So that we can have common language and common methodologies when we work with children around that social emotional regulation. I know. Happened to me too. So I mentioned the therapeutic or transitional support pilot that we want to implement at Bell Middle School this year. We took a look at the data and I think that the evidence is pretty clear. Not just in our district, but I would say nationally in terms of the increases of depression, anxiety and behavioral disorders. And they are not just rising, they're rising at earlier levels or earlier ages. And we're hoping that by being proactive and providing support earlier, we may prevent challenges of dysregulation from becoming bigger. As well, it's part of our strategic plan to take a look at social emotional support and student connection and belonging at the middle school level. Initially, we plan to have a dedicated space for the TSB program at the middle school. It will be staffed initially with a teaching assistant with support from the school social worker. And there'll be training provided to the teaching assistant who's working in that program. So that they can again, use that DBT approach with our children. And as staff are able, they can push in and work with kids who are in there academically to make sure that they're checking Canvas and keeping up on their assignments. While they're using that space. So this is just a shift to some informational things for you to take a look at. Our classification rate remains pretty stable over the school years. And when you take a look at it, the data that's collected is on what's known as Bed's Day, which is the first week of October every year. And so it says 23, 24, because we're kind of a year behind as we collect that data. But we're fairly stable in terms of the number of students we have with IEPs. New York State is about 10% higher than our classification rate. If I had to attribute it to anything, I would say that it's our really strong processes and teaching in the general education classroom.
This next slide shows how our classified students are distributed between the 13 classification categories under IDEA. And there isn't a whole lot of change. We seem pretty stable and consistent. The two categories that are the most common for our students in here in Chappaqua is learning disability and other health impairment. And what an other health impairment is, it might be something like how ADHD, which is a health impairment, impacts how a student is learning. So that might be an example of of another health impairment. But we don't have a huge amount of change in our classification for this year.
This next slide just shows where all of our children are currently receiving their services. Out of those 389 students, 357 of them remain in district in an inclusive setting. 29 of those students are placed out of district. And we currently have three students who are medically unable to attend school and their services are delivered in their home. The 29 obviously is higher than the 25 and the 21 from the prior two years. But I did a historic look back and that number is fairly consistent over the past decade or so. We have ranged between 20 to about 35 students who have been out of district. I would also let you know that some of the students and some of the increase in the students who are out of district. Tend to be secondary level students whose emotional needs, emotional regulation exceeds the support we're able to offer here in our school district.
Karen, do you think those numbers would change?
Kelly has a question, Karen.
Yeah. Karen, do you think those or Jamie, do you think those numbers would change once we have the mental health system set up here? Would that accommodate or provide more support for those kids that are now being served outside?
We're hopeful that it will. In addition, some the multi-tiered system of support allows us to identify earlier. And then either utilize the DBT that we have in our school. And or refer to the the Northwell Health Program that we're going to be partnering with. So I think it gives us lots of ways to support students to hopefully avoid it getting to be so significant that they need to be placed out of district.
Thank you.
This is just really a breakdown of where our children are who are out of district. Seven students are at BOSI's, which is considered an other public school setting. And BOSI's has, you know, a range of services from more to less restrictive. They could be in a fully non-integrated program. They also house programs in public school settings so that children are able to access integrated setting as they become more confident and able with their skills. We have 13 students in a private school setting and those are fully non-integrated settings. Those are students who are on a non-integrated campus. And then we have nine, I think nine students who are in other public school settings. And those are other public schools that offer programs that we don't currently have in our district. And typically they are self-contained or special class programs. So this is the number that we really continue to pay a lot of attention to. Because there are two reasons. One is because the numbers continue to rise in preschool. And they're fairly significant. The numbers have increased pretty substantially over the last couple of years. We've had less initial referrals, but more students have remained classified or are classified within the preschool setting. And it's important because those students are all then going to age in to our kindergarten setting. So we move these kids from the CPSC or the preschool setting to our school age setting. And some of them remain classified, some of them don't. The Committee on Special Education, we are responsible for that. We are responsible for the IEPs. We hold the meetings. But the programs and services are delivered by the county. So providers contract with the county and the services are provided through the county. Even though we own the responsibility of those IEPs and we chair all of those meetings.
So before I switch the slide, the one thing that I think is important for for you to know is even though it shows 146 classified preschoolers, that doesn't mean that we're going to have 146 classified kindergartners enter our elementary schools, that many preschoolers are declassified when they get to the elementary school. So on this slide, we really get start to talk about the budget. And the special education budget has three main components. They are salaries, other expenses and tuition. You'll see that most of our money goes to salaries. On the next slide, we'll go into detail about other expenses. And then the tuition for our students who are placed out of district. So you'll see in the salaries, a slight increase. And really that is only because of moving some personnel from a contractual. I don't know what a contractual way of hiring them to incorporating them into our regular budget. Just make sure I'm getting that right.
That connects back to what Josh was saying before.
Exactly.
Yeah, about protecting ourselves from the federal grant landscape. Yeah.
And some are funded by the federal grant and others are funded by our contractual line. So we may have somebody who's supporting us with like CPSC meetings. Because we have so many through a contract. And we're going to move that person into our budget for for next year. So this slide, oh, this slide shows the other. This slide shows the other expenses, which was on the on the one prior. And it outlines things like equipment, supplies, travel and conferences, postage. Some of those like nuts and bolts of running a department. The the biggest number on this slide is our contractual services. Other contractual services might be if we have a student who needs sign language support, that would be a contract. We don't have a behavioral interventionist on our staff. If somebody, a student has that on their IEP and needs support with behavior. We could enter into a contract with someone who could provide that service.
Right. I just want to add, so the contractual student services, some of those services have been increasing. Those are being offset by the what Jamie had talked about, moving some of the CPSC to an employee. So there are some contractual services that are increasing. But pulling that whole CPSC contract out and putting it into the salaries line shows it as a ever so slightly decrease.
So I know Josh touched on this a little bit earlier. These are the funding sources that we have in our in our special education budget. Part of the money that we get this year, we were awarded $800,000 for the 611 and the 619 grants. 611 is children ages five to 21 and the 619 grant is for ages three through five. And the state has a complicated formula that they use for excess cost aid. And it's the amount that it costs to educate a student in special education with their supports and services. That's above what it would cost to educate a general education student. And that's that 2, 2.175 million dollars. The Medicaid reimbursement is down this year. And I wanted to tell you that the reason why is because the state had made some errors in their funding to districts. So they put a stop on funding to districts from September through December of this year. There was no Medicaid reimbursement to any district. They are now starting to release those funds again. And so we're going back and we're able to recoup the money from those services. But it's just taking a while for that to catch up from the lag in in which there was no payment from New York State.
So on here, the IDEA money is federal money that comes to the district for students with disabilities.
I had done just a brief survey with colleagues in the region. And they had said everything that you have already spoken about earlier, that they did not anticipate a change in those federal grants for the upcoming school year. But it could impact us in subsequent school years. So no one was going based on an anticipation that there might be a change in this current school year. But because we work with Josh, who's already sort of thinking ahead, we've already started to shift some of our our salaries and funding from that federal grant into other budgetary sources, just so that we we are ahead of that happening. If it if it does happen, if it does come to pass, that there's less money coming from those federal grants.
And so we have point six of seven special educators are in the grant. And point three of three psychologists are funded currently through the grant.
Is that your last slide, Jamie? I think it is.
We just have questions next.
Any questions?
I have two. They're both small questions. The first is basically going back to the first slide, which is just can, and you don't have to pull the slide up. Can you clarify just because people may not know the difference between resource rooms and learning centers? And why this is a positive shift to make this move?
Sure. So Resource Room is a pullout program where students get specially designed instruction in a small group setting. And they the law requires no more than five students to one special educator. And what we found here, which we spent a lot of time studying is that our resource rooms, students spent a lot of time working on homework and getting support in that area. So what we did instead is we increased the number of students that could be in a resource room in a learning center at one time. So that and if it exceeds five students, there's a teaching assistant there as well. So students could get a combination of specialized instruction in order to access the curriculum. But we could also maintain this historical need and value of having homework help at the same time.
Thank you. And my other question is when you talked about the out of district placements. Those are our placements, right? Like that does, those numbers don't include parentally placed.
That's correct. That's correct. Those are students who have through CSE, a determination has been made that their needs were not able to be met here in district. And that there are places where their needs could be met outside of our district.
I have a related question to that. Do you have more, Hillary or? Okay, so just do you did the comparison on the placement rate, like, you know, we're placing 10%. New York State average is about double that. When it comes to the out of district placement, are we comparable to other places? Or are we accommodating more, a higher percentage of students or a lower percentage of students?
Are you asking if regionally we're commensurate? I would say yes. Regionally, we are commensurate with districts who have similar sizes and profiles to ours. The answer is yes. In larger districts or you you may see, or in other regions, you will see higher rates.
And I think the biggest change in special education is is students having more mental health needs than we've seen before. And so the fact that we are entering into the partnership with Northwell Health should be really very beneficial to our to our school and our students.
The state, the slide that said that our classification rate is below, was it New York State or New York City? New York State, okay. So we're not classifying as many kids as the state is. So is that because we're just really better at catching the kids early and getting them to the point where they don't need to be classified because we're catching them with early intervention things? Or is that because we are just not seeing the same levels?
I think there are a couple of reasons and then Karen, if you want to add to it, you can.
I know Karen mentioned one on the slide, but I just if you clarify around that.
I think that our multi-tiered system of support is a big part of it. And more specifically, what's been really helpful is the addition of our universal screener NWEA. So having that piece of data and having that information that we're getting three times a year. We are able to identify students early, give them, provide them with an intervention plan. That's at the school level and the tier one level, the general education level, which then lessens their need to get more intensive services later. Do you want to add anything to that?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. First, Jamie, I just want to acknowledge that I'm very sad. This is the last presentation you'll give to us. I'm not sure if you feel the same way. But truthfully, you're going to be an incredible loss for the district. I have one question that doesn't relate to your work because you will be gone. But you mentioned the expectation and anticipation to sort of add ICT at the elementary levels. From a budgetary. From a budgetary perspective, what will that look like for us going forward?
So I actually think that we, next year, will be in a pretty good place for it in such that it won't make a huge budgetary impact. So we have seen in our earlier grades, our classification rate is lower. We still have some bubbles, which we do sometimes. Right now, our bubbles are in fourth grade at the elementary school. So it seems possible right now, and who knows, I don't have a crystal ball, that we will get to a place that it will be fairly typical to have one cohort per grade level. That you could then have one special ed teacher assigned to that class and be in the classroom all day with the general education teacher. So we've been tracking it, you know, hoping to get to to a place where we can do it with a little budgetary impact. We think we're close.
And that would be one per elementary, is what, when you said that, or you mean?
One per grade.
One per grade, so that's a little different, yeah.
So it would be five teachers per grade. And there are, again, there are different models of doing it. Like in some of the lower grades, many schools share a teacher in K one. And then you have one teacher in three, four, or five. So, you know, if you think about that, we already have four special ed teachers in each of our elementary schools. So if we get, if the trend continues, as we're seeing, we should be in a good place for next year at this time.
Can I ask a question about that, though? And I think ICT classes, great. But I guess my only question, as we think about that potentially projecting forward, is that one of the things that happens now at our elementary schools is, on average, the grades are roughly 100 kids, right? And so the kids will move around and be with different kids, you know, each of the K through four years. If we move to that model, how do we prevent a scenario where the kids who do need that level of support are really only exposed, you know, to half a class of new kids each year? And really then are traveling as a cohort versus the more typical elementary experience?
May I just, we haven't really explored this fully, right? So this is conceptual. But there are some definite advantages of moving in this direction. But there's also some deep considerations that need to be made by us as we start to kind of vet this out a little bit more, and you're highlighting one of them right now. So thank you for that. So, thank you.
No, I have questions.
All right, thank you, Karen and Jamie. Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
All right. Have questions? Karen, Kaylee has questions.
So a simple question is, I just wanted to clarify, like, the difference between teaching assistants. I know when you were talking about the teacher to student ratio and how we were lucky to have this happen this year in terms of having teaching assistants in all of the classrooms. Could you just explain, like, how does that differ from paraprofessionals? And what the numbers are again?
So in our district, we have we have aides and we have teaching assistants. Teaching assistants have to go through a certification process. Teacher aides do not. And so they have some, they have some level of education and they've taken a test in order to be a teaching assistant.
Okay, so there's teaching assistants, teacher aides, but no paraprofessionals?
We do not have paraprofessionals here.
Thank you. And then just going back to the classification rates that, you know, people were asking questions around. And you had mentioned that it was stable. And I just wanted to ask, because my understanding and interpretation of it is a little bit different in terms of when we see stable classification rates, or like it has gone down. I don't want to say one way or another, that this is something that we should celebrate or not celebrate. But in my mind, as an educator myself, I feel like our goal is not to lower the classification rates necessarily, but to make sure that we classify properly and then provide the proper services that all students deserve and need. So that's, like, I want to ask, like, when you see, you know, like, whether it's a trend or historically what you've seen in percentiles, when you see that it's been stable, even including out of district placements and in district placements and all of those things in the mix. How does that, how do you feel about that? Like, does that mean that we're doing better because they're stable or the numbers are lower? Because sometimes I feel like, oh, to me, that might be a red flag. In my mind, if I think of it like a little bit differently, it might, I might say, oh, well, are we not properly classifying children and not giving them the services that they really need?
So I think that what we're doing is we're getting better at identifying students who who need to be classified. And that we're able to meet the needs of students who need support. But it, but it, we can catch it before it rises to the level of that need. So I would like to say that we've gotten better at really identifying kids who need special education services.
Okay, thank you. And then where does 504 fit into all of this? Because I know we talked a lot about extensively about IEP. And then how does 504, because I'm sure, you know, we have lots of students here who have 504 classifications. And how does this fit into the big picture of things?
So I would be remiss if I did not tell you that our 504 rate is high. And I don't, I don't think that's new information. I think that what it speaks to is we do have, and I think it partners with the question you just asked before. We have kids who require accommodations. And with those accommodations in place, as long as they're implemented with fidelity, they don't need the direct explicit instruction from a special educator. But they really do require those accommodations in order to access the curriculum. And so we are really willing and able to take a look at children who require those accommodations and put those 504 plans into place. And I think in part, they they are successful. And their success also may in part speak to the lower classification rate with the IEP. I think there may be a correlation.
Okay, thank you. So then, speaking off of that, I was looking at the chart and there was a line item for professional development around IEP. But we don't have a professional development around 504. And with the numbers that you're speaking of, which I don't know the exact numbers, but we know that it's it's very high in the district. And so do we have any support around 504? And are these trainings providing learning around disabilities and other relevant diagnoses that actually, like, general ed teachers, counselors, anybody else who's not the expert in special ed should know of and be aware of, so that when they're speaking and working with students and families, that they could probably, properly, you know, support them and be able to speak to the accommodations that they they need and deserve?
So that's a really good question. I would tell you that I think our teachers, our general education teachers, are really expert at that. They come to our 504 meetings. And typically, when we have a 504 initial eligibility meeting, we have reports from all of our teachers. And then we have teachers at the meeting. And they are best able to articulate what children need in order to have equal access to the curriculum. And they are the ones who say to us, this is a student that I've been watching and I've been noticing and I've been identifying that they need additional time to complete an assignment. Or they need to preview assignments before they can complete them. And so our teachers are fairly adept at doing that. They also have the opportunity every year to meet with the case manager, either the school counselor or the educator, who is responsible for identifying and implementing the 504 plan. They're able to review it with them. We've also done reviews with our teaching assistants. Every year, we meet with them over the summer and we review common accommodations so that they understand how to implement them. And we often give professional development during superintendent's conference days around the implementation of the accommodations. Because I agree with you, it's critically, it's critically important that all of our teachers do how to implement them and feel really comfortable in understanding the methodology of those accommodations.
Can I, I just wanted to add to that, Kaylee. So I also think a lot of our students who have 504 plans, a lot of the students who have 504 plans often have weak executive function skills, ADHD, or anxiety. And if I go back to DBT, and I may sound like a broken record, but the four modules for DBT are mindfulness, distress tolerance, interpersonal effectiveness, and emotional regulation. So what we have found, we've trained our clinicians and our counselors, they are very anxious to share it with the rest of the building faculty so that there's a common language, so that there's some common strategies that everybody in the building can use to help students become independent in managing some of these feelings that they have during the course of the school day.
Okay. So then, if, I think, Karen, you said the counselors are their case managers?
At the high school.
Yeah, okay, so then if the, so in the high school, if the counselors are the case managers and then are following the 504 students throughout the year, besides the training that you just spoke about, is there, is that ample training? Is that enough, or do they need more? Or do they actually have too much on their plates? Because we know that the counselors are juggling a lot of things in terms of being able to manage all their caseloads, not just the 504 students.
The school counselors aren't responsible for the training. They're just responsible for making sure that all of the teachers who work with a student are aware of the 504 accommodation plan. We provide the training. I've done them with Joe Drew at the high school. We've done them in faculty meetings. And as well, we've done the same thing at the middle school level to share out how to implement the accommodations. You're right, I would not anticipate that the school counselors would be responsible for making sure they knew how to implement it. They just make sure they, that teachers are aware of which students have an accommodation plan, that's all.
Okay, so then should there be a person that follows the 504 students, like, throughout the year? Because also, I think there's also sort of a disconnect, if I understand correctly. These meetings happen in the fall, at the beginning of the year, where teachers generally might not necessarily have a lot of knowledge about the students. And although you have meetings and you have paperwork that can tell you a story, it's not the same as a lived experience as if you had that child in the class for several months to say, okay, I'm seeing this, this is the way I want to move forward and how to support this student, et cetera, et cetera.
So our teachers are starting to use different strategies to keep track of that information. For example, they might use Google Sheets or some people use numbers or forms. But they have different ways in which they are tracking in their classrooms which of their children have an accommodation plan and which accommodations they have so that they make sure that they're implemented. Our other resources are special educators, who are really experts in accommodation plans as well. Just because on the IEPs, children also have accommodations. They're also able to support their colleagues in understanding how to implement and making sure they're implemented. And again, we can provide any of that training with new staff if they're not familiar. Most of our staff in our district, because we have a number of kids with 504 accommodation plans, are fairly familiar with the plans and how to implement them.
One last quick question. What's the difference between self-contained classes and special classes that you mentioned before?
So the self-contained class is a special class.
Okay, so it's the same thing. I just wanted to make sure. Because that's how I understood it, but I didn't real, I didn't know if that was the case.
You're correct.
And we call it non-integrated, meaning it's not in the mainstream setting.
Yes, okay, great, thank you.
Can I ask one follow up? The DBT therapy groups, that you said they're excited to extend it to all the teachers in the building. Do you think that we'll get to a place where kids who don't have IEPs or 504s, just our general ed students, could be part of the DBT and get some of those skills as well? Because I feel like a lot of kids would love all those those skills that you mentioned, even if they don't, you know, classify.
So this year, we will conclude our training in the intervention DBT program. There is like a whole class program. However, we use Ruler and they're very closely connected and closely aligned. So while it may not be the exact same language, it's very similar and there are a lot of similar concepts. So once we finish the intervention, we can make a decision if we want to do some training for the whole class, which is, like I said, very similar to the Ruler program that we currently use.
Great, thanks.
Athletics.
Thank you, Jamie and Karen.
Thank you.
And here comes Jamie Block, our athletic director and director of physical education and health.
Thank you, everybody. So this is kind of our priorities and our strategies. You know, we're very interested in promoting and teaching empathy, gratitude, and humility. And probably one of the most important things is for our athletes and our families, as well as they're ambassadors of our community and our school. Whether they're playing or competing, wherever they go, and they have, they're ambassadors and representing us. This is our organizational chart. There's not too much change really going on here. Some coaches up and down and a couple of extra teams and programs. Our participation numbers are very robust here. They've been really wonderful over the years in the fall. Those are numbers, our spring right now, that's an estimate, we're a little lower than in the past. But sometimes it's good for certain teams that we don't have to have reductions, which is exciting. And for other ones, it's a little more challenging. But it's been very, pretty consistent over the years. Our academic programs for mandated things are health and physical education. This is just a large extension of our classroom. It's the biggest classrooms we have in all of our buildings. We have a very robust program down at the elementary schools, there are exciting classes. Whenever you go by there, you're going to hear lots of noise, a lot of excitement, a lot of laughter. Our middle school extends that, gets a little more competitive sometimes. And at the high school, we have a tremendous elective program. One of the very unique things we have is all of our ninth graders go, are in class together. And they're meeting children from the other middle schools. And the elective program is really something special, where children get to pick an activity or games or sports that they're really interested in learning about and playing and engaging in. So why, what's our why in physical education and athletics? There's a couple of different terms up there. And the one I really love to focus on is fun. You know, we really want children to engage in physical activity. It's really healthy. It's also a great way to socialize and meet new people and challenge ourselves. But traditions and competitions, it's just a real big extension of the classroom. Our athletic programs, we had a tremendous fall. We have a number of state titles in the fall. In the winter, we just finished up another tremendous season, number of championships and individual honors. I just got back from Ocean Breeze on Saturday, where we had three athletes make all state in indoor track. And we have the spring to go, so we're really looking forward to it. Our programs and our purposes, as I said earlier, we want students engaged. We want them participating, we want them socializing. And, you know, we want them to have success. But we also don't mind if they fail as well. No fear of failure is something you really have to learn in athletics. And that's okay to learn to get back up, work together, and improve. Before Dr. Peace was talking about curriculum, this is kind of our hidden curriculum. Our curriculum is what we're, what we're, what we're teaching. Our instruction is how we're going to deliver it. And then for us, the assessment as a scoreboard goes on a lot of times. It's not always about wins and losses, but that's our assessment, how do we improve from there? So last year was our first year, we introduced flag football last year. We kept it as just one team and we started, we were a little over 50 was our number. So it was a challenge, but we stuck it on, it was a really good season. So this year, we're offering a JV team. Most schools kept about 12 to 18. You hear the name football, so you think big numbers, but only seven play. So it's kind of a smaller number. So we're really looking forward to this season. It should be very exciting. There's been some possible interest of volleyball on the boys' side, that is also a fall sport. And we will do some interest meetings, that would be JV boys' volleyball, possibly in the fall. Modified girls' flag football, as it grows throughout the state and in section one. Right now, the section is not hosting it, but there is a good possibility that they will. So here are our numbers. Our equipment, that's kind of some of our large ticket items. We purchased a number of goals and lacrosse went to a pilot this year for a play clock. So we had some big investments in that this year and that may continue next year. It'll be more clocks for more fields. We're looking to also replace some of our athletic trainer vehicles and other vehicles to transport people around the campus. Otherwise, most of our items are kind of on the same, our traveling conferences, just we've done well, we're traveling, which is great and exciting. And then some of our biggest ones are supplies, supplies, things just continue to get more expensive. And then BOSIS and Athlet, BOSIS is, that's our biggest line there is officials. So there's officials contracted increases every year. We also run a number of different things through there, Impact, GIPR. And we also contract with BOSIS for some sports information, which does a lot of our social media. with BOSI's for some sports information, which does a lot of our social media. And then transportation. Our Booster Club is an outstanding organization. They support us in financial ways, but in, not just running different events, but they support the children of all different levels throughout the entire year. They're a great organization, I would urge you to get involved with them. They're really, they are the team behind the team, so I can't say enough about all their support they've given us. As I mentioned earlier, we've put a lot of time into our social media, this is kind of what we're trying to tell our children and our community's story in a positive manner. It's not always about the wins and stuff, but it's about the relationship, the friendships, the joy of doing it. We've, children love Instagram, so we've got a 108% increase. We also have Facebook page and our X page, and we've created a really nice relationship with Stroll-Chappaqua. We have an article we're working on right now, you'll see a number of articles in there. And that's it, thank you so much for supporting athletics and our physical education and health curriculum. Any questions?
I have one. Jamie, I know the girls' side of flag football is a booming sport, but I wonder, going forward, have we thought about the optionality for the boys' side too? As people start to, you know, sort of rethink whether they're gonna let their children play tackle football, giving boys that option, which is also a growing sport, to play on the flag side as well?
It hasn't come up yet, right now. The biggest driver behind flag football is the NFL. I mean, the NFL and the Giants supported us starting the program last year here financially as well. That has not come up, I'm not sure if they'll go down that path. Could it be something that we would start? It could be something within the section or an intermural for us? I'm not really sure.
So nobody else is doing it right now?
No, just in the youth level and local level, just flag.
But it hasn't made its way up to the high school ranks yet?
Correct, no.
Okay.
I'm very excited about volleyball for the boys. A lot of boys are excited too, I think. I do have a question. I'm looking at the laundry and conditioning line, I think some of the ways that these are...
So, a number of items in reconditioning?
Oh, wait, wait, I didn't ask the question. So I'm just looking at that, I wonder if this falls in that category, or if I miss In terms of, you know, I have two student athletes at the high school, and I'm wondering, like, how does uniforms work? Like, I know that you take them home, and then like through the season, you wear them, and then you return them, and then there's a lot going on. So at what point, is there like, okay, after five years of having basketball uniforms or soccer uniforms, and it's getting really raggedy, or it's getting really like you can't repair them, or when do you purchase new uniforms, and how does that work?
It's kind of like on a three to five year cycle. Uniforms don't get as beat up as they used to, because a lot of teams play on artificial surfaces, so they're not as bad, and they're made pretty strong, and they're expensive. So that's pretty much the cycle we're trying to stick to. You don't wanna, you wanna rotate that purchase, because if you try to do the whole school at once, you're not gonna be able to afford it. That's pretty much the cycle we, I've been following here. I've also, I've kind of transitioned into a lot of reversible sets, where some of our lower-level teams are wearing reversibles. It also works when another, a student shows up and they have the wrong color, they can just turn it inside out. Makes it a lot easier, especially for other teams. So that's been really beneficial.
But there is a cycle that you follow?
Yes.
For each team?
About three to five years, unless they're that beat up.
So no team is like, expected to or told to like, go fundraise to get your own new uniforms?
No, we don't, we're not purchasing warmups and things of that nature. We use a number of school stores where children can purchase those types of items. The actual uniform, the school is responsible for purchasing. There are some sports that are unique to those children, swimming for example, they're buying their own suits, because it's, they're not turning it back in. No one's gonna take a suit and...
Well, because it's also $800 a suit that you could only wear 20 times.
Yeah, the tech suit, yeah. And, but reconditioning, what you were talking to before, is there are certain items that have to go out, they have to be reconditioned, they have to be noxy tested, and they're cleaned by professional cleaners.
Okay, thank you.
Are we able to see any savings through the BOSI's that we're seeing in other places? Is that something that's applicable to the sports BOSI's, or?
Savings, I don't think we're gonna see any savings from BOSI's, sorry.
Well, only Josh is able to negotiate a cooperative deal.
Yeah, there's, there are some, there is some money that comes back on certain things that go through there, you get some state aid on certain programs, if it's, if it's billed through BOSI's.
Understood.
Yeah, it's not as big, there are some items, but very small.
Got it, thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie, you'll just stay here for the community update, because we're gonna talk about flag football and soccer, so.
Yes, thank you for staying.
And so that is the end of our budget presentations, and we're meeting next Tuesday to go over the component ends of the budget, so we invite our community to come back to, to, to learn from Josh and Mario about some of the other aspects of the budget that we haven't spoken about this evening. And we are on Tuesday next week, not Wednesday. And so before I talk about International Day at Seven Bridges, I did want to highlight in the agenda, an SMOA to increase our coaching staff for varsity flag football, and then we, our longtime head coach for our boys varsity soccer team has decided to step down, and we have an appointment on the agenda tonight. When we have a varsity coach in the fall vacancy, we point the new coach as soon as possible, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done leading up to the season. So I would like to give Jamie the opportunity to talk about both of these items on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so I, I was touching base a little bit on flag footballs. So flag football's, I think we're third or fourth year here in Section 1, and it's now grown out throughout the state that there are state championships. As I said, we started off with about 50 students last year, we were in the 40s, it was challenging, but they did a good job, and they, I think they really enjoyed it. So now we're moving to the JV team as well, and it's an exciting sport. As I said, the NFL is a strong backer behind it, and we, ideally you'd be looking 12 to 18 students on the team, only seven play. So it's, like I was saying before, it's not, when you say football team, you're thinking, oh, great, big numbers, it's not. They play on a little smaller field, it's about 40 by 80, and we're going to line the pole barn field as well, to use that for both practices and games. There has been conversation at the middle school level, it just hasn't gotten there yet. Whether it'll take place at the end of this season, or maybe in the fall, if schools look to add it. But I think there's another six to seven schools adding it for this spring alone.
Any questions about football?
Okay, and then did you want to highlight Chris's?
Yeah, so I had the pleasure of meeting Chris. Chris is an in-house teacher here, he's local also, plays soccer within the community. And one of the things that really resonated me with when I was meeting with him and talking was, it wasn't about the wins, it was about the relationships with the kids. He's coached for over 20 years, he started in New York City at a school district, didn't have the sport, and they, they started, and they took their lumps. But it was just a great opportunity for him, and then he went on to one of the highest level schools in New York City. I'm not that familiar with the PSAL, but the PSAL grades their schools with 3A being the highest, and the school he was at, he coached at, he was the head coach for over 16 years, was a highly competitive team in the PSAL in Lower Manhattan. They didn't take buses, they took subways and trains, that would be something interesting for us. So he's used to some late nights and playing in Brooklyn and stuff, so I think playing locally here, and he's very, been involved in our youth program, I think he's gonna be a great addition to our staff. One, he's gonna be someone who's visible, he's already been at the games, and I think he's, in talking to him, it wasn't the X's and O's of the game, there was a relationship with the student athletes, and building those relationships, and you know, working with a program that's really successful. He understands, for me, the philosophy on finding a great coach is, you need someone who's a great teacher. They don't have to necessarily have the degree, but they have to be able to teach progressions of the sport. They have to be able to differentiate their education and their classroom, and then they have to be a great businessman, they gotta sell, they gotta be able to build a business, and then they gotta be great marketing and selling. He understands all those principles, and I think he can do a great job leading this program.
So, so he did, I know you said that, I couldn't hear very well, but he did coach for, you said over 20 years?
Oh, yes.
So he coached soccer?
Yes.
For over 20 years?
Yeah, at the highest level in New York City.
Okay. No, I think it's always, it's not only a good thing, but I think it's our contractual obligation that we find people in-house.
Yes.
Right? First, and we look inside, and then if we can't, then we look outside.
Correct.
But I also think it's important that as we look within, that it's not, you know, somebody who coached basketball that would be coaching soccer. I mean, but maybe played soccer at some point in their lives, it's a little different playing and coaching. I do think that I'm always of, you know, the point of, the expert should be, whether it's teaching, administration, any department, or coaching, that they're qualified, competent, and of that field, not some other sport or some other field, and you're teaching something else. We wouldn't ask that of teachers, so I just want to make sure that that person was well-versed in soccer, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
I just want to invite Andrew to come back, and then we'll get started. Thank you very much, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam, Jamie, and Andrew, and Josh for helping prepare the budget for tonight. It's a long process, and I just would encourage our community, if you have any questions, you can certainly contact Josh directly, or email your feedback to the Board of Education, Josh, or myself, we would welcome that. All right, so now I want to talk about International Day, because we've received a lot of feedback about this from the community since last Thursday. So on my first slide, I break down by category what that feedback has been centered on, and I just want to start by acknowledging that there are parents and residents who are very upset, frustrated, and hurt for a variety of reasons. And I know this based on the discussions that have been had with the principal, with Andrew, and myself over the past few days, and some of the written feedback that we've received. And everyone who's written to the board, and me, and the principal, we've reached out to, and offered to have a conversation, depending on whether the person was a Seven Bridges parent, or a resident, or a parent in a different building, with either the principal, myself, or Andrew. And all of the feedback that we've received through those conversations have been shared with the Board of Education. And the building principal is reviewing the concerns shared with her about International Day, and is working to address them. Also, when events happen in our schools during the school day, it is the school district's responsibility to ensure that the events are carried out appropriately and aligned with our board's strategic questions and our policies. And when it's brought to our attention that there is a concern in one of our schools, we need to go back to our policies and evaluate the concerns against our policies and make decisions based on this review. So in response to the concerns and feedback we received, Bell has made adjustments to their upcoming International Day, and the principal has communicated that with parents, and he did that on Monday. And I just want to highlight specifically, that we're adding to our policies and our process outlined in 4060, that speaks to how we vet outside speakers for our events. And a team of staff, including content specialists, will review all displays the night before the next International Day, on, before we hold the event. I'd also like to share that the district will take more of an active role in anchoring large events that happen in our buildings, and that after the International Day concludes, as well as the Middle School Career Day, which is our next large event that's coming up, that the policy committee will review our outside speaker policy, and talk about potential adjustments based on our vetting process. But we will use the process that I just described for Bell International Day, for also the Middle School Career Day. That the principals and the PTA and the central office will review all large-scale events that happen in our buildings this summer, before we schedule them for next year, to determine what shifts we need to make, just like we're making a few for Bell International Day, based on what the concerns have been raised are. And I also want to thank the American Jewish Committee, AJC, who've reached out to us, they've been great partners with our school district, and we've scheduled a meeting with all of our principals with them, to talk about the feedback we've received since the International Day at Seven Bridges. Also, there's been comments asking me about faculty and staff, and whether or not there's been training in antisemitism and Islamophobia. So I just want to highlight, last year, we had full staff professional training sessions with experts on both topics, and our social studies teachers engaged in a more comprehensive training based on their roles as teachers within our school community. I also just want to clarify, based on what has been shared with me, that when we have complaints about photos with our children in them on social media, we have to take them down immediately. We just have to, this is a protective measure for our children. And I'd just like to end by saying that the staff is trying to do their best navigating a very complicated and complex time in our community, and I know we can figure this out by making some shift in our policies and providing more support for these events. And I welcome your feedback, and how you're feeling as we work together in the best interest of our children.
Do you have any more you want to say?
No.
No, that's it? Okay, well, I think before we proceed, I know that some board members would like to make some comments about what took place last week, so I'm gonna turn to Hillary to get us started with that, and then we'll kind of work our way down.
International Day should be a wonderful event. It's exactly the kind of event that supports our strategic goal around our students' sense of belonging. Making sure that our students feel valued, respected, and like they belong in our school community is incredibly important to all of us. And frankly, as someone who struggled to make friends when we first moved here, a sense of belonging for our students' families is really important to me as well. International Day is meant to be an event where families of children in the building represent the cultures in their homes, through art, music, and maybe some delicious food. It's meant to show our children a little bit about the cultures of their schoolmates. I want to see these events continue. I want to see us foster the sense of community that comes from sharing about ourselves and about our families. International Day, or any of these events, must not be politicized, or used to display anything divisive or intimidating. Not only is it completely inappropriate and harmful, but it's a horrible affront to the people of the CCSD, the PTA volunteers, and all of the other parents who participated and worked so hard to make it a great event for our kids. When I learned about what was presented at International Day at 7B last week, I was upset and angry. There are enough conflicts in this world, we must not bring them into our schools, especially under the guise of a cultural showcase. This applies to any and all geopolitical conflicts. I was hardly the only one who had a visceral reaction. Many of our Jewish families, parents, and children were horrified at what was displayed, and were hurt that it was inserted into an otherwise joyous event. We have worked so hard to eradicate hate, and yet this happened. I don't have a child in that building, but as a Jewish mother of a Jewish child, I know that she will be exposed to hate. God knows, we've seen enough of it together this past year and a half, and there have been a lot of conversations I never thought I'd need to have. But I do expect her to be protected from it in school, and I expect all of our children to be protected. And frankly, I expect all of our parents to share in that goal. When our children say something has harmed them, we believe them. When our children err, when they say or do something that another child reports has caused them distress or harm, or made them feel intimidated or victimized, as we look to the words or deeds, we look at the impact of those words or actions, as well as the intent. If the student has harmed others, whether intentionally or unintentionally, the student may face consequences, and I hope that the adults in our community can rise to the same standard.
In all honesty, I'm furious that we find ourselves here yet again. After last year's tumultuous fall, the policies that we put in place were aimed at creating a district that was neutral and a safe environment for every student. Concerns from International Day have shown us that we clearly have more work to do around these issues. International Day is a longstanding event where we celebrate our students' multitude of cultures and varied heritage. We were attempting to have an event to bring our students together and to embrace their different backgrounds. Instead, we find ourselves pitted against one another yet again, and hurt by our vastly different feelings around a complex issue. The world is hard enough that we do not need the adults in our children's lives making us more divided. Personally, I feel angry that people in our community are deciding what others should and shouldn't find offensive. If someone tells you that you have hurt them, that should be enough. If a student or family feels scared and worried for their safety by something you have done or said, that should be a reason to look at your actions. But to say to the offended person, you have no right to feel that way, or I didn't mean it in the way you received it, is in my opinion disingenuous and cruel. The school is looking into what happened at Seven Bridges. Bell's International Day next week will happen with much tighter protocols on the content of presentations, and be fully vetted the night before the event. We will keep moving forward. We will not... We will keep moving forward. We will not tolerate antisemitism or Islamophobia in this district. We must treat each other with dignity and respect, and model for our children the type of behavior we wish to see in the world.
If folks could just, yeah, I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. We don't need to have, if you could limit your applause. Just a short advice I would have. Sorry. Go ahead, Matt.
Tonight, as we began in earnest, providing details and clarity around the nearly $145 million budget we will ask our community to support in May, I think it's an opportune time to ask the question if we are missing the forest for the trees. One of the five pillars of our current strategic plan, and the perennial priority for all those who sit on this board, in Dr. Ackerman's seat, and on the admin team, is ensuring that all of our students feel a sense of belonging, that they feel safe, supported, seen, heard, considered, all of them. And once again, at International Day at Seven Bridges last week, we failed to uphold our promise as it relates to this imperative. The intent of International Day, and all days of its kind, is to expose our students to cultures of their fellow classmates that they may not be familiar with. Through dress, music, food, and other cultural components, the beautifully organic way kids generally get to know one another can be supported through vehicles that pique interest, inspire curiosity, and provide joyful, harmonious experiences. I personally am of the strong belief that if this programming was student-led, this room would be virtually empty tonight.
Again, please, please, no applause. Thank you.
Last week, my eight-year-old daughter came home so excited to explain to me the practice of Lent, and how one of her really good friends made the bold and ambitious sacrifice of giving up her iPad for 40 days. True, genuine, unimposing, organic learning. But once again, when the adults attend the party, too often, the activity is ruined for the kids. One of the many real assets aging has is the ability to draw off your life experiences to inform your future behaviors. As parents, it is incumbent on us to leverage this to model behavior we would like our children to reflect. In the aftermath of what happened at Seven Bridges last week, once again, this community has devolved into its worst self. An exceptionally nuanced situation has been simplified into a binary, "I'm right, you're wrong" screaming match. Everyone is punching, and no one is listening. And the worst part about it, everyone is losing, including the innocent kids. That's right, the kids, the reason why we're all here. Not just those of us up here, but all of those who live in this community. We live here not for the happening downtown scene, the ease of the commute, or home affordability. We live here to give our kids the best potential life outcome, to get a great education, to play sports, to make friends, to stretch your innocence as long as possible. But yet, amidst all the conjecture and consternation regarding who is right and who did wrong, almost no one ground their argument in them, the kids. For an event that's intent is advocacy of cultural expression and strictly apolitical by nature, we should never be having to litigate its aftermath. Instead, it has sewed more of the divisive barriers that the event should theoretically be breaking down. This imagery is clearly antisemitic. This imagery is clearly cultural. How about this? If a presentation by an adult inside one of our buildings makes even a single kid uncomfortable in their safe space, then we probably need to reconsider it. The students are my constituents, and they should be all of ours. I don't ever presume another individual's intent, particularly someone I've never met personally. In fact, I have found much more peace in my life as I have at least attempted the practice of assuming good intent from all, with the acknowledgement that we all, on some level, have clear biases and agendas. But what I don't appreciate is being told how to feel. I don't do that to you, so you don't get to do that to me. I can sit up here and provide a laundry list of the things that I get wrong, but I have a deep respect for people's feelings and sentiments, particularly when it comes to polarizing issues such as this. And I'm willing to listen, engage, and learn. So if an image makes me and the Jewish community feel a certain way, we can have a discussion as to why it was not intended as such. But you cannot tell me I'm wrong and hateful because it hurts or upsets me. I was shocked, saddened, and disgusted when I turned on the news 18 months ago to see the aftermath of October 7th was caused for great revelry, as opposed to mourning and despair for many on college campuses throughout the country. There are those who found this to be positive political activism. I hear from the river to the sea as a threat, and some call it something else. But none of this is actually relevant in the context of what we're doing here. This is a school board meeting. We can take the gloves off and try to listen to one another and understand that our unique perspectives, if we are willing to do so in an authentic way, but not here, not at student activities, and not in front of our children. As a community, and on a larger scale as a society, we have lost the plot. We continue to repeat the same problem over and over again because we do not listen to each other, we refuse to understand one another, we give no grace, and we lack empathy. We're modeling all of this to our children, and if we don't stop, and that means all of us, then our kids will take these exemplars and turn into us. Nothing will change, and we very badly need a change.
Again, please, please. Thank you.
So you don't have to clap after mine. My belief in earnest desire for our students have not changed, and so I will reread my statement I shared right after October 7th of 2023. And then I added a little paragraph at the end. I feel moved and compelled to speak to let our students and families know that the incomprehensible acts of violence that has unfolded this past weekend is frightening and scary. It is difficult to find just the right words to offer any ounce of comfort and hope. Irrespective of our diverse backgrounds and beliefs, it is crucial that we come together to protect the children of our local and global communities. Our students, regardless of where they come from, deserve a safe and peaceful environment, as well as a future filled with hope and opportunity. The tragic loss of innocent lives is a devastation that knows no borders or boundaries. As a school community, we are tasked with fostering an environment that prioritizes the well-being of our students, both now and in the future. We're in the future now. It is essential that we provide the support, compassion, and understanding to our students in need during the scary and challenging time. It's still scary and still challenging. We must stand as pillars of strength and support for our children. Our school is comprised with students from diverse backgrounds, including those directly impacted by these events. We are here to create a safe and inclusive space where every student's voice is heard and valued. My heart goes out to the children who are caught in the midst of this turmoil, to the families who endure unimaginable hardships, and to the students within our own community who may have personal ties to the affected regions. We need to remember that the anguish of innocent people, especially children, transcends any geopolitical complexities. I hope for a future where the well-being of innocent children and families is never compromised. That was my statement right after October 7th, 2023. This is today. This is a place where we welcome all children to feel valued, cherished, and respected. I want to remind everyone, we have policies and regulations in place to protect our entire community, all of our students, all of our families. I'm so sorry to our children that this is happening.
My comment's a little bit different, because it's directed to the superintendent and to the admin team. I'm not the type, I think people know this about me, to be super demonstrative. I don't really lose my cool that much, but this event from last week has really tested that. I have to believe that a district as capable as ours, that can do all the things we just heard about for the last hour and a half, can run a longstanding PTA and student-school event that is meant to help all cultures feel seen, heard, and valued, actually have that happen, and without it turning into precisely the opposite of that, for multiple groups of people. We have it in our strategic planning. It's the first pillar. It should be on our building leaders and district teams' mind every day. It's all about student belonging. As Kaylee just mentioned, we have policies in place that are meant to provide guidance for these situations, and we put new ones in, given that we've been here before, not that long ago. And so I'm just really puzzled as to why we couldn't anticipate concerns that could arise in an event like this, and organize the event in such a way that it would have the proper oversight and avoid a repeat. I'm just really, I'm profoundly disappointed. I thought this was something that we were on top of, and last week proved that we have a lot more room to grow still. I'll leave it there for now.
You're 100%, right. And I see people want to clap it, and I understand.
All right. It's time for committee reports. I don't know if we have any.
I don't.
We had policy meeting, but we're going to talk about the policies as part of the agenda, so why don't we wait?
Wait till then. Okay, very good.
I just want to briefly mention that we had a CSF meeting last night, online. It was their grants approval meeting. Those grants that the CSF board approved now have to be approved by our board, which we will be presented with on March 26. But I did get a preview last night at that meeting, and it's very exciting stuff, and I think you're all going to really like it. But I cannot say more, so tune in on March 26.
Okay. Kaylee?
No, policy. I'll talk a lot then.
Yeah, okay. Just checking to see, everybody okay to keep going? Yeah. Okay. We've reached public comment. I'm going to say a little bit more about that than I usually do before we get to that moment. There's a blurb on every agenda that I typically read before public comment, but since there might be some new speakers tonight that aren't used to our process, I'm going to elaborate a little bit more, just so everyone has an understanding of what the ground rules and expectations are. So here's the typical statement that I read in every meeting. "We welcome public comment, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Board members may be contacted by email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the prompts presented." Here's the additional bits for folks to understand. "Please identify yourself when you start your comment. If you are unable to complete your comment within the three-minute time limit, you can request one additional minute to finish up, but you'll need to pause so that we can consider that via a motion." "Please also refrain from raising individual student matters, including," this is important, "naming specific families or parents in your comments, in order to respect the privacy of our families and our children. If you do that, I will pause you." "Please also refrain from raising individual personnel matters. The CCSD is a workplace, in addition to being a wonderful school, and its workers also have protections we need to respect in this public proceeding. Again, if you do that, I will pause you." I also want to emphasize that public comment is not a dialogue between the community and the board and the district team. It's an opportunity for you to comment. If you're looking for specific answers, or you want an exchange of ideas, or just to share more, board members and the district team, as has been stated throughout the meeting tonight, are available by email and by phone. Please reach out to schedule that with us. These rules are in place to allow us to hear from a variety of perspectives during the meeting in a timely fashion, understanding this is a regular business meeting of the Board of Ed. Thank you for being respectful of these rules in advance. If you would like to speak, we have a microphone down here next to the district clerk, Lisa, and I think we're ready to begin.
My name is Leslie Peterson. I have a child in elementary school in this district. I first want to ask a rhetorical question, because I know this isn't a dialogue, but do any of you plan to ever advocate for Muslim and Arab students in this district? Like many of you, my husband and I moved up here because of the schools. We wanted to raise our kids in a place that would set them up for a successful future. Sterling academics are just one piece of the puzzle. What's great about CCSD is that the students get a chance to learn about the cultures of their classmates. Recently, my son came home excited to tell me about a Lunar New Year assembly featuring drag and dances, red envelopes, and other traditions associated with the holiday. Similarly, he's learned about the traditions around holidays like Diwali, Eid, and Hanukkah. In his class, there are children of many races, ethnicities, and cultural backgrounds. And proudly sharing their culture in a school setting only enriches their educational and social experience. In a time when diversity and inclusion have never been more embattled, a charge led by the highest office in the land, it's crucial that our district continues its commitment to these concepts. Learning about other cultures teaches our kids to be curious about others, not to fear them or ostracize them. It prepares them to be global citizens armed with empathy and curiosity. I was thrilled to hear about the tradition of International Day, another opportunity to showcase the many cultural traditions of families in the district. But when I read the statement from Dr. Stewart saying that the Palestine table didn't align with district values, I felt my stomach drop. Frankly, I'm disgusted.
Sorry, I need to remind you of our rules. Please do not refer to individual personnel in the district. Thank you.
Frankly, I'm disgusted. Was there any time taken to review the content of the table? To react so swiftly and censor anything related to Palestinian culture is another painful erasure, promoting and enabling prejudice and division within the district. It also plays into a horrible Islamophobic trope that anything associated with that culture must be violent, offensive, and terrorist. This does not just harm Palestinian kids, who do exist in our town. It harms kids of Muslim, Arab, and Middle Eastern descent, too, and ultimately, it harms all of our children. What kind of message does this send to them? Otherizing rather than approaching different cultures with empathy and curiosity tells our children that people who are different are something to fear and mistrust. It tells them that other cultures are invalid unless they are filtered through a very particular and limited lens. I have heard of kids being called terrorists and immigrant by other students in a denigrating way. I would consider those slurs. CCSD's move in light of the current climate in our country tells kids that that rhetoric is okay. Make no mistake, this is not just about Palestine. Otherizing and ostracizing one group does not just affect that group. It shows our children that the same logic applies to anyone who is different from them. It is a disservice to all of our children and our community as a whole. The message kids will hear is that other cultures are threatening or shameful, rather than things to share and celebrate with their friends. I've heard from admin before that you need to hear from more people who share my perspective. Well, I thought I was allowed to ask for another minute.
Yeah, so again, just to remind everyone, if you can't quite finish, you can request an additional minute.
I'm almost done, I promise. Thank you.
You have to request an additional minute, and then I will ask the board to approve that by a motion. So would you like...
Could I have another minute? I take 30 seconds.
Okay. All in favor? You may continue.
Thank you. Appreciate it. While there are others who feel similarly, who did not feel safe speaking tonight, because they faced being doxxed, harassed, and ridiculed. Why would people feel safe reporting to a district that continues to mistreat them, other them, and tell them through its actions that their culture is not valid? This district has shown hostility toward a community of people who are our neighbors. It's embarrassing, and frankly, I worry that it's discriminatory. I implore you to do better. Uphold your duty as representatives for all children and all families. Thank you.
Again, please limit your applause. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Shakufa, a parent in town with kids in the district. We are not here to defend or apologize for the Palestinian display, because there is nothing to defend. We are here because of anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, Islamophobic racism in this district enabled by the admin. Once again, a small group of parents in district messaging has villainized the Arab, Muslim, and Palestinian culture. Many in this town, no longer just us, are exhausted by the district's pattern of caving to bullies, whose only goal is to exclude and erase our children's identities. Your carefully worded email has still caused harm. It has led to doxxing, harassment of community leaders. It has alienated Muslim, Middle Eastern, Arab, and Palestinian families by suggesting their culture may not align with district values. Parents across backgrounds, especially after the Palestinian book ban, have reached out, disheartened. Some are now questioning what was even deemed offensive at International Day. This has fueled anxiety and reinforced the dangerous idea that cultural exchange is something to fear. So let's get to the heart of the symbol, of the email, the symbol. Here it is. A melamine watermelon bowl, a bowl that held pieces of pita bread from the Chico's for kids to dip olive oil. We are parents in this district. We are community members. Our children are friends. And honestly, are you not embarrassed? Embarrassed that you're treating a watermelon bowl like some covert act of hostility on our behalf? You're saying it was there under the, quote, "guise of cultural context"? Can you hear the Islamophobia in this statement? Do you not see how racist it is to assume that because of who we are, Muslims, there must be malicious intent? That this bowl must be hiding some kind of violent, weaponized message because our community put it there? Palestine is allowed to be at International Day. It is allowed to have national items from its culture there. It is allowed to have national items from its culture there, and it is everyone's collective job to learn about these items from Palestinian people, not to assume you understand it already. That's literally the point of International Day. It is evident that this is not just about a bowl, but about the very inclusion of Palestine itself, which many in this town constantly equate with terrorism, and you have reinforced. This email, the email raises an important question for the district. How do you define values? Because time and again, there seems to be a fundamental disconnect between how you use this word and how we do. When we teach our children about values, we teach them to think critically about ethics and morality. We teach them that identifying values, identifying your values is the easy part. Standing by them in the face of pressure is the real challenge. Can I have an additional minute, please?
Can we have a motion for an additional minute? Second, all in favor? Please proceed.
We teach them that identifying your values is the easy part. Standing by them in the face of pressure is the real challenge. Values are what guide difficult decisions. They require conviction, not convenience. And yet, this district has repeatedly abandoned its own stated values at the first sign of pushback from the same small group of parents. You hired a librarian based on your values, then banned a book that librarian selected using professional expertise on district guidelines and values, again, because of complaints from this same group. And as you yourself acknowledged, the book was never even checked out, let alone forced upon anyone. You built a long-standing tradition with International Day, designed around values, yet you reactively changed the rules at Bell and implied that cultural values are somehow offensive to district values simply because the same group objected. So I ask again, what does this district actually stand for? Because right now, it seems that your values only hold up when they go unchallenged, but true values demand courage. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Cass Sant. I'm a Greeley alum, and when I came home for a break from college, I wasn't expecting to have to respond to the character assassination of my friends back here, but I guess here I am. So first off, I want to talk about the envi, what the environment was like when I did go to Greeley. I was a senior here when Israel began its genocide on Gaza, and I remember how censored it was. And I remember how-
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Excuse me. Could everyone please be quiet? Could everyone please be quiet so I can address the situation? Cass, we can't have language like that. Are you able to continue your comment?
Yes, I am, I am, yes. I remember how community service organizations and other Greeley alums were blacklisted from campus. I remember how student organizations that did not even express support for Palestine but were tangentially related to Palestine work were forcibly shut down, their club advisors, faculty club advisors harassed into silence. I remember how the school claimed it was apolitical, using this as a pretext to censor pro-Palestine speech on the grounds it was quote-unquote "too divisive," but at the same time, allowed Israeli flags to be hung in the libraries, in classrooms, everywhere, how it officially sponsored a Stand With Israel rally after Israel had already begun bombing Gaza. I went to that rally, and I remember how its speakers blamed Palestinians for their own deaths. And in the eyes of those speakers, and indeed, what I felt was that in the eyes of the school, was that Palestinian people are not human. In the eyes of Horace Greeley High School, Palestinian people were cannon fodder, to be killed and never spoken of again, and if anyone did dare speak about them, they were a terrorist sympathizer. I remember when the book Young Palestinian Speak was banned, a book with firsthand accounts for Palestinian children about the material realities of settler colonialism and apartheid in the West Bank, which was deemed inappropriate because of the subject matter. And I don't know what to tell you, because these are real things that are happening. And now, all of this has come-
Excuse me, excuse me. Please do not interrupt the speaker. Thank you.
All of this has come to a climax with this crowd gathered here to accuse my friends of antisemitism, having literally doxed people, having flung around this word terrorist to play on racist Islamophobic canards, to demonize people for the crime of saying that Palestinians exist. But guess what? Palestinians do exist, and this is not divisive. To have a Palestine table during an International Day, a day set aside for the explicit purpose of celebrating other cultures, is something totally normal, because Palestinians exist. So please, just stop the doxing, stop the censorship, and above all, stop the racist insanity. Free Palestine.
Again, before the next speaker goes, I want to just remind people again, please use respectful language. Please do not react to the speaker. All right, let's continue.
Hello. Good evening, my name is Samar, and I have three children in this district. I'm an Algerian-
Samar, before you continue, would you mind tilting the mic up a little bit so we can hear you better?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's a bit low, I'm a bit tall. I'm an Algerian Muslim, born and raised in London, England, and the USA is the fourth country that I've lived in. This is my first time speaking at the Board of Education meeting. I'd like to offer you a glimpse of what it's been like for children of Muslim, North African, Arab, or Middle Eastern descent in this school district for the past year and a half. Regardless of your background, faith, ethnicity, or political persuasion, I would like for you to tap into our shared humanity, and for just a moment, imagine I'm speaking about your child right now. Your child is called a terrorist. Your child is singled out in a group, finger pointed at him, asking if he condemns Hamas. Your child is asked if he is one of the good guys, or if she is against us. Your child sees his peers wearing flags of other countries on their shirts or backpacks to school, and wants to do the same for another country, but is told that they can't do that, that the land of their great-great-grandparents is evil. Your child writes an essay as part of a school assignment, asking the government to stop sending weapons that kill children. He's called into the principal's office, and his parents are notified. Your child wants to raise her hand in a social studies or English class to question the possible bias inherent in certain lessons, or at least start a dialogue, but she quickly lowers it, knowing that she may once again be castigated or rebuked for doing so. She knows that there's a social price to pay if she speaks up. Your middle child goes to the library to check out a book on the lives of children that share his religion, his culture, his background, and is told that the book is no longer allowed to be there. Your child sees his coach wearing a baseball cap of the logo of a military force that has killed tens of thousands of children just like him. Your child sees students' artwork in the halls of the, in the halls of the school symbolic of and representing other nations, and when she designs a dress simply in the colors of another nation's flag, that dress is removed from display and hidden away. Your child's art for an elementary school identity project, a picture of a hand in certain colors, is not included in the classroom display. And most recently, your child sees a table sharing the beautiful history and customs of his background becomes the target for the most publicized, documented hate and vitriol that we have seen in this town to date. He's being taught that everything about him, his religion, his culture, his language, his foods, his dress, is presumptively antisemitic and hateful. This isn't a fictional case study. Each of these things have happened to students in our school. It's every day when they get off the bus and enter your classrooms. We're in danger of teaching our children to accept and perpetuate racism, prejudice, and discrimination. Oh, could I just have an extra 15 seconds, please?
We're gonna give you a whole minute here, just hold on a second. Can I have a motion for an additional minute?
One second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, please finish it.
Thank you. We here, we can't control what parents say or do, and you're right, ultimately, we can't. But what you can control is whether you, as administrators, as the Board of Ed, as educators, advisors, coaches, and counselors endorse and perpetuate a targeted bias. Thank you.
Not as tall. My name is Danny Peterson. I'm a parent of two kids who will go to Seven Bridges. I wasn't going to speak today, but I'm ashamed that there are people on stage gaslighting our community. We are giving into misinformation by responding to this absurdity. Why does the existence of Palestine make the individuals in this room offended or uncomfortable? We speak about the actions of parents, but it's the actions of the parents who are turning this into an issue. Palestinians were telling their story. They exist in our community. And by only conferring with the AJC, the district is showing clear bias. Why not talk to a Muslim or Arab advocacy group as well? You're catering to one community and silencing anyone who opposes them. But the goal of the group spreading misinformation is to silence Palestinian voices and erase their existence in our community. They will probably tell you something like Palestine doesn't exist. History books in organizations like the UN would beg to differ. By taking this approach, they create an unsafe environment for Palestinian people in Chappaqua as well as Muslim and Arab people. Case in point, my child's best friend, whose family is Muslim, has already moved out of town because they are made to feel unsafe and unwelcome. This is not what this town should represent, and I'm ashamed by all of you up here. Our town and our schools must be safe for families of all backgrounds. CCSD must stop catering to misinformation from a group whose goal is to silence Arab voices and spread Islamophobia. Thank you, and please stop this dystopian insanity. Have a good day.
Please, do not react to the speakers, please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hannenberg. I have two children in the district. I'm gonna read a letter from the parent who created the Palestine A to Z Board. This is her letter. "Good evening. I want to take a moment to address the concerns surrounding the Palestine A to Z Board and to share the true intent behind its creation. I am a Pakistani Muslim, and ever since I was a child, I have been in love with America, not just for its opportunities, but for its spirit of inclusion, for the way it weaves together cultures, traditions, and histories from all over the world into one great diverse tapestry. My own family is a reflection of that ideal. I married an American of Irish Catholic heritage. I have two brothers-in-law, one who is Jewish, one Jewish with Russian heritage, and another who is Bangladeshi. My extended family includes members who are French-Canadian, Dominican, Indian, British, and Japanese. My family, like this country, is a beautiful blend of cultures, faiths, and traditions. So when I created the Palestine display, I approached it with the same enthusiasm and joy that I would have for any culture. My goal was simple, to highlight the rich history, vibrant traditions, and deep-rooted heritage of a people who have contributed so much to the world. The Board was designed to celebrate art, music, food, history, and traditions, just as every other cultural display on this International Day. Yet, I was shocked and saddened to hear the Board labeled as antisemitic. That was never its purpose. Recognizing and celebrating Palestinian culture does not mean being against anyone else. In fact, the very spirit of this event, the spirit of America, is to honor the diversity of peoples and cultures, not to diminish or erase them. International Day is not just about presenting one's own culture, but about learning from others as well. If we displayed the cultures we personally identify with, our children would never be exposed to the hundreds of traditions, languages, and histories that exist in the world. The beauty of this event lies in its ability to expand our understanding, to foster curiosity, and to create connections beyond our immediate experiences. So I ask, what is the real issue being raised tonight? Is the content of the Board, the mention of Bethlehem, the olive trees, the poetry, the embroidery, the music, the food? Or is it the very existence of a table for Palestine? Because if the concern..." May I please have one more minute?
Can I have a motion for an additional minute? Can I have a second? All in favor? Please proceed.
Thank you. If the concern is the Board's content, I'm more than willing to engage in a thoughtful conversation. But if the issue is simply that Palestinian culture was represented at all, then that raises a much deeper question, one that challenges the very principles of inclusivity and respect that this event is meant to uphold. The unfortunate reality is that discussions about Palestine are often met with misunderstanding, and at times hostility. But we must be able to celebrate cultures without fear, just as we honor Irish, Italian, Indian, and Jewish heritage without controversy. Palestinian culture deserves the same space for appreciation. This display was never meant to divide. It was meant to educate, celebrate, and share something beautiful. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marielle, and I'm a junior here at Greeley. And I'm here tonight as a proud Jewish student and advocate for Israel to express my deep disappointment and frustration regarding the recent International Day event held at one of our schools. While celebrating diversity and global culture is a noble initiative, I was shocked and appalled to learn that a table representing Palestine was included in this event. This is not just about cultural display. It is about the implications of allowing representation from a group tied to the atrocities committed on October 7th, when innocent Israelis were murdered, kidnapped, and terrorized in ways that defy humanity. How could this have been allowed to happen without thorough vetting? How could you let something so sensitive slip through your fingers once again, if I recall last year's X-Walk Greeley? This is not just an oversight. It feels like a slap in the face to Jewish students and families in our community, who are still grieving the horrors of what occurred. It is disgraceful that such a decision was made without considering the impact on those of us who feel directly targeted by these actions. It is your responsibility as leaders in education to ensure that events like these are carefully vetted, especially when they involve topics or groups tied to ongoing conflicts and trauma. I'm asking you, how did this happen? And what steps will you take moving forward to prevent such insensitive oversight from happening again? And lastly, can you tell me where Palestine is on the map? Because if you look carefully, it's not there. This is a betrayal of trust that students and families place in you as leaders, and I urge you to reflect on this mistake and ensure that such a disgraceful decision are never made again, and I'm Shalhei. Thank you.
Again, please do not react to the speakers. We will pause the proceedings if we're not able to follow the guidelines, just keep that in mind, please.
Hi, my name is Sean, and I'm a senior here at Greeley. As a graduating senior, I will not be directly affected next year by the actions of the school board. However, as a proud American-Israeli-Jewish member of this community, I felt I needed to speak out today because I care about my fellow younger Jewish students. The individual who authorized this, authorized this definitely saw that some places labeled Palestine on the poster that we see right here actually, uh, sorry, are actually sacred and holy places for the Jewish community, meaning they completely reject the feelings of the Jewish community and the history of the Jewish community in that land. For example, on the poster, there's a place called Jericho that they label as Palestine, and they negate that as part of Jewish history. If the participation rules demanded that parents and individuals must be from an existing known country, then the rule had been violated, and the rules were, if, and the rules were violated, if the rules were violated, then some, the person who did allow for those rules to be violated should be held accountable. Second, we're all aware of the highly polarized time we are currently living in pertaining to this issue. If the district knew that many people in our community are Jewish, why was the Palestinian table allowed to be selected not only to take part in the event, but be the face of it on the district's official social media? Was the district aiming to alienate its Jewish community and students? Are Jews not allowed to feel safe in Chappaqua? Of all the tables, nations, cultures, someone chose to use the one controversial nation as the face of our district and its stance on the Jewish community. Who is this person? Why do they think it was okay to erase Jewish history in the land of Israel and allow it to be called Palestine, reading the Jewish people of their history and representation? Do they not understand how painful it would be to its Jewish, Jewish community? We all remember what happened last year with the antisemitic organization that was allowed on campus, and how the district pledged to implement its new vetting rules. I would like to end with this question. Are Jews in Chappaqua safe, or are we looked at as a non-existent minority pertaining to the piece of land that we've held for thousands of years? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, and thanks for hearing us. I actually just want to start with, I'm Rabbi Jonathan Jeffrey, I'm a parent here in the school. I just want to- I just want to thank you all and empathize for a bit because this is really, really hard, and there's a lot of emotion here, and so I want to thank you for your time. I also wanted to say to the people who are here that I'm deeply sorry to hear that there have been Islamophobic attacks on kids. I wish they were still here to hear that. My kids as well have been the target of anti-Semitic attacks in schools, and none of that should happen, and much to the point that was made before. I got in trouble last year on a smaller scale with the International Day. I ran the Jewish table and for Israel table and gave out about 250 squeaking frogs for Passover, which were then squeaked all over the school, and so I apologize for that as well. But last year, when I showed up, there was a Muslim table there celebrating Ramadan, and I went up to them and I asked them, I said, "I'm a Bell parent. I have an Israel table. Could we maybe go next to each other, and maybe we can demonstrate to all of the kids some solidarity?" And they said, "Yes." We stood next to each other, and we had a lovely time. And it was a lovely lesson, and I thought example for the rest of the students, that here were Muslims celebrating Ramadan and Jews celebrating Passover together as one. And I'm sorry that in this moment that that wasn't available. I want to talk about, I'll give you my, just two pieces of perhaps advice or guidance going forward that I would suggest. Well, I think that countries and cultures absolutely should be represented, and they should be able to celebrate all of their cultural gifts. I think we should avoid platforming individuals or statements of racism or terrorism, and that goes to any group. I would say for the Jews, if we put out a table that had quotes from Baruch Goldstein, a Jewish terrorist, or Meir Kahane, a Jewish racist, that that would be on us as well. And then when the district sends out a flyer celebrating Muslim heritage, and that includes many notable worthy Muslim representatives, but also includes some who have made deeply hateful and anti-Semitic comments, as well as some who are connected to terrorist organizations, then that's deeply problematic. So again, for all of us, I think the basic litmus test should be, has there been any statements or intensive racism or terrorism by any of those involved or symbols that are related to that, and take those away. For example, the red hand that was mentioned just a moment ago is a symbol from the Second Intifada, from the lynching of Jews in the West Bank, and the red bloodied hands being held up for the crowd to see. The harder one, and this goes to the watermelon water bowl a moment ago, is how are we sensitive to symbols that for some act as dog whistles and can be interpreted as threatening by some? For example, I last year could have brought pictures of my two nephews serving in the IDF and put it up there on my table, but I certainly did not want to make anyone feel uncomfortable. I knew this could be triggering. So I think it just falls on all of us to be a bit sensitive and think about those symbols that possibly are going to make others feel uncomfortable. May I have one more minute, please, sir?
All right. Can we have a motion for an additional minute? Yes? All in favor? Okay, may continue.
In all, my only advice would be to, I would spend our time ensuring that the easy part of barring hateful people and hateful symbols be something that we would focus on. And here, I'll give just as one proof, that one of the symbols on the board is a quote by the Palestinian poet Mahmoud Darwaj. I'll just quote from his work right here, and just to tell you how this is sensitive to some of us here, writing to the audience, "It is time for you to be gone. Die wherever you like, but do not die among us, for we have work to do in our land. We have the first cry of life. We have the present, the present, and the future." A clear call for the eradication of all Jews from the land. And so that, for me, would fall into that category of problematic discourse, and I'm glad that we're addressing it here. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi. I didn't prepare something. I probably should have. I want to thank...
Please identify yourself first.
My name is Ann Angowitz. I don't have kids in the district anymore. It's been a while. But things have sure changed, and not in a good way. I am speaking because I found out about a lot of young families with younger kids who don't feel comfortable coming up here to speak because they're fearful about retribution for their kids. They're worried about it. These are mainly Jewish families. That's number one. Number two, I'm very concerned that the only way that we find out about this stuff is from random pictures that are posted on the CCSD website. The way that I found out about the book that was banned, which clearly was not banned, it was moved up, I believe, to the high school, was from a picture that somebody was proudly showing was being promoted in our library. I'd like to refer you guys to an organization called camera.org, which looks to accuracy in Middle East reporting and analysis. And look at what they have to say about that book. A lot of the book is factually completely inaccurate and really is, in my view, disgusting. Has erased Jewish history in, for example, Hebron, which is where our patriarchs are buried. Jews were there over 3,000 years. And then, in 1929, a massacre of Jews, rape, heads cut off, same kind of thing that happened on October 7th. I think we have to look at what our school district is actually doing, and the parents don't know. All we find out is because we happen to see a picture. If you expect to have the trust of this community, that you are actually following your own rules, you need to be transparent. I don't know that people are clear about whether or not the Brown Choices Program, which was used, is still in effect in terms of what we're teaching about the Middle East. Forgetting Jewish kids, all the kids in this district deserve to know truth and fact in an honest way instead of in a propagandized way by some publisher imprint that has got an agenda. I think we need to understand how these decisions are being made and by whom, and there needs to be a lot more transparency. That's what I have to say. I think it's really a shame and really disappointing. I also want you to note that all of the people who I think are in agreement with me are quietly listening to the other side, trying to understand what's going on. And it's really a shame because they're not here. I'm done.
Hi, I'm Alana Traven. As you've heard here tonight, there seem to be many people who prefer to blame our Jewish population for problems within the world and our community, though they fail to recognize us by name instead calling us "the group of bullies" or "them." It's nothing new to us, but this is not something that should be tolerated by us or anyone. And too often, when our experiences with antisemitism are voiced, the common refrain is to be accused of Islamophobia. The message seems to be clear: either don't speak up about antisemitism, or if you do, do so at the risk of being labeled Islamophobic. Jewish kids at our school are experiencing antisemitic messages, verbal threats, Holocaust jokes delivered to their faces by emboldened students. When they stand up for themselves, they're sometimes labeled Islamophobic or have unfounded accusations filed against them with the administration. This should not happen to any student. And while we should all aspire to be part of a community that welcomes non-political cultural expression, there is a line that is crossed when that expression comes in the form of references that belittle, intimidate, or threaten other people. Less than two years ago on this campus, my teenage son was confronted and shamed by an adult member of Westpac, an organization currently being investigated by members of Congress for funding antisemitic college riots and being sued for antisemitic incitement around the country. This organization was welcomed onto this campus even though community members had continually warned the district about Westpac in prior years. I appreciate that the district took measures to prevent future incidents by adopting a policy on outside speakers sponsored by school-affiliated organizations. But by your own admitting here tonight, these guidelines were not followed as politically biased material was featured as part of a district-sanctained event. While I support programs such as International Day as a wonderful chance to expose students to the customs, foods, and contributions of other countries, it should not be a platform for presenters to express their political views. Our school must be a place for all students to feel safe and respected. When it is not, that is a failure of the district and will not be accepted by anyone in this entire school community. Thank you.
My name's Warren Gottlieb. I'm a resident in the district. I've had two kids go through the system, and I've been here for about 20 years. The first thing I just want to say is, I'm a bit surprised that that placard that was displayed earlier is not in your possession. I don't know why, how you could conduct an investigation here without having that item, so I would suggest that you get a hold of that immediately. I don't, you know, that just seems like something you would want to have. I really want to just talk about the process and facts. My understanding is that all of this comes under Policy 4060, and that set forth a review procedure. And it seems to me we really need to know whether that policy was followed, and if it was followed, how did some of these materials get approved? And those two questions have to be answered. And I would ask just that the board report back to the community on that, because I actually think that policy, if followed, is supposed to prevent this type of situation. And it's, to me, it eliminates the chance for opportunism and to have this type of nonsense go on, and it really does need to be followed. And if the district needs resources to evaluate these things as they come up, that's fine. Also, I don't think the night before is when you should be looking at these materials. I think that policy says at least five days. So if that's going on with Bell, I think, or any other event, you need to look at that because I don't think that's what the policy says. And this is not to play a gotcha with you, okay? You know, I don't want any group to ever be a target like what happened last week. Any group, and that's what that rule really is about, okay? You know, look, I'm a member of the Jewish community, okay? There was a lot of, there were a lot of things said here tonight, but I'm going to give you some facts, okay? The FBI last fall reported that anti-Jewish crimes are at the highest level recorded by the Bureau since it began collecting data 30 years ago, all right? Jews only make up about 2% of the US population, but 68% of all religiously motivated hate crimes are committed against the Jewish community, okay? According to data released by the ADL this past December, 71% of parents reported that they encountered antisemitism in the classroom, and there was 135% year-over-year rise, okay? The ADL released another report saying that nearly half of the world's population had deeply entrenched antisemitic values. I'm telling you this, and I could go, you know, chapter and verse here through all these statistics and facts, but those are facts, okay? And those facts are the reason why you're going to see parents like me demand vigilance from this institution and this district, okay? It's not to be a tough person. It's because these facts are why we will not let... May I have another minute, please?
Can I have a motion for an additional minute? Can I have a second? All in favor? Please proceed, Warren.
Okay. There will not be, I can assure you, any individual or group who will shut down our ability, okay, to raise our legitimate concerns, and they sure as hell aren't going to distort them, okay? This community, the Jewish community, has been an ally again and again and again and again, to all. So the fact that somehow we would be portrayed as the aggressor is an offense. It's a lie. It's a libel. We have been there for everyone, and my kids and many other in this district are wondering where their allies were. We are here because we see what the future will bring if you produce another set of minds that are trained on curriculum like the Choices Program and exposed to this type of hatred, not because we want to be, it's because our survival depends on it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Roy. I have two kids in this high school. So first, I want to say that the offenders become the victim.
I'm sorry, but I can't quite hear you. Do you think you could...
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I want to say first, I'm Roy. I have two kids here. I live in Chappaqua. The offenders become the victim. The people that were supposed to sit here and listen also, saying that they don't know why this is so offensive. It was full of known Hamas symbol. It's not the Palestinian culture. It's Hamas. It's the terror, it's the murder that we are protesting. If this was just a poster with things about Hebron and Yeriko and all other places, and Yasser Arafat, which is their leader for many, many years, that brought them what they have today, it will be fine. It's about the terror, it's about the Hamas. That is the offending. And the outcome for that, and the question why it should never happen again, these people should never be on school property presenting anything to anyone. Politics should stay out. I know, I do a lot of politics in this town. You can see me every Saturday in town, outside of Starbucks, in the farmer market, not in school. School is a different place. School is for education, not for my politics. And people here talked about the culture of the Palestinians. I saw some of the culture. I was in Beiri, I was in Yeroz, I was in Yeritzchak. I saw what that culture can do. It's not all the culture. They have other things. Some things are good, but so many are so bad. So I would love them to present a nice part of the culture, but what they give us all the time, time after time, hidden in this type of things, is the bad, is the murder, is the Hamas. Thank you.
Again, please don't respond. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yael Frankel-Jaffe. I'm a mother of two students in Greeley. I'm an Israeli-American. And like the people who spoke before me, I want to say that Palestinian culture, you could talk about the food, you can talk about the music, you could talk about the beautiful, you know, dances, but I'm going to say the things that were highlighted in the poster, and again, why don't you have the poster for you to really be able to review it? Let's talk about the poetry. They mentioned the poetry. So I'm going to read you. Those who pass between fleeting words by Mahmoud Darwaj, I'm going to read it in the English. "It is time for you to be gone, wherever you like, but do not live among us. It is time for you to be gone. Die wherever you like, but do not die among us. For we have work to do in our land. We have the past here. We have the first cry of life. We have the present, the present, and the future. We have this world here and the thereafter. So live on country, our land, our sea, our wheat, our salt, our wounds, everything. Live." So when we're talking about Palestinian culture, you could show so many wonderful things, but what they've picked is this author, this poet, and this is his most famous poem. So this is what he's known for. And they are counting on the fact that the people that are looking at aren't educated on the matter. So those be like, "Oh, it's just beautiful poetry." He's a poet, because nobody here knows what this poet, what his poetry really is. So this is where we are now. I really hope you will get the poster. I really hope you'll be able to actually look at what's on it and really assess. When you're talking about culture, what is the culture that we want to show our students? Thank you for listening to me.
Good evening. My name is Dana Gold. I have a sophomore and a senior at Greeley and have been part of this community for years as a parent and a volunteer. I've served as a Graffin PTA Chair, middle school PTA Chair, and have helped run the middle school theater program. I also have a master's in education and now teach a Temple Beth El's Early Childhood Center and Religious School here in Chappaqua. I fully support children and students learning about different cultures. International Day should be a celebration of traditions, food, and history. I used to cook for International Day myself, bringing my homemade chicken soup and standing there with a label, asking kids, "Do you want a matzoh ball?" That's where these events are supposed to be, that's what these events are supposed to be about, offering a piece of who we are and inviting others in. And from what I understand, the Palestinian table at 7B's event included education about Palestinian cookies, treats, olive oil, dancing, and storytelling. That's great. But at a school event during lunch, when all students were moving through this space, the table also included watermelons, a symbol widely used by anti-Zionist and anti-Israel groups. Why bring in symbols that turn a cultural event into a political one? Middle school students, many of whom are Jewish and active on social media, children love Instagram, immediately recognized the watermelons as a political statement. They saw a subtle but clear message that felt targeted, that made them feel targeted. Instead of feeling included in a cultural exchange, Jewish students felt singled out and unwelcome. This was a school event during the school day at lunch. This was a school event during the school day at lunch. Students had no choice but to see it, and at a time when antisemitism is surging, that's a problem. I don't think our children are fragile or too precious to handle tough conversations. This entire situation actually has become a learning opportunity. But wouldn't it have been a better lesson if the lesson was focused on people, on who people are as human beings and the similarities we all share, instead of on symbols tied to people who openly want to eliminate us from the world? No student should walk away from a school event feeling targeted, especially by an adult. If International Day is about celebrating cultures, then let's make sure it actually does that. Food, music, and traditions bring students together for children and by children. Political messaging, whether overt or subtle, does the opposite. I need a drink of water. I'm sorry, I'm stuck. I support students learning about history, conflict, and identity, but these conversations belong in classrooms led by trained educators, not in the middle of a lunch period where middle schoolers are left to interpret... May I have an extra minute?
Can I have a motion for an additional minute? All in favor?
Thank you. Where middle schoolers are left to interpret loaded symbols on their own, this district and this community needs to take a hard look at how this happened. How did an adult get to shape the narrative of a country's culture in a way that made Jewish students feel unsafe? Our schools should be places of learning, not politics, inclusion, not division, and certainly not a space where students feel alienated because of their identity. We must do better. Thank you.
Ready? I am Lisa Katz, Chappaqua resident, former town supervisor. Haven't been on this side of the dais in quite a long time. I did not prepare anything. My current job is, I'm the Chief Government Affairs Officer for the Combat Antisemitism Movement. And I am blessed in this job to work with elected officials around the world to identify antisemitism and to adopt policies, procedures, and legislation to fight against that. In fact, I just came back from Alabama, where I had a roundtable with mayors there, right before I marched over the bridge to commemorate Selma and the historical collaboration between the Jewish and Black communities. So I fully embrace International Day, and one of the things we actually advocate for is to have multicultural events, interfaith events. That's very important. In fact, we held an interfaith Holocaust Remembrance Day event, and we're doing an interfaith iftar event. Those are very important. And the Muslim religion and the Jewish religion are not the problem. There's nothing in the Quran that says, "Kill all the Jews." But this has become political, and it's something that I think, I don't envy you for having to deal with this every day. One thing I am leaving you is a report about antisemitic symbols since October 7th. And can I just leave this out? And, you know, we all know what a swastika is, but we don't necessarily know how to recognize other symbols. That is very important. And let me just tell you what it says about the watermelon, is that the watermelon symbol, though it may seem harmless, operates as a dog whistle for a broader ideological stance that denies Israel's right to exist and promotes its erasure. By cloaking this match in cultural or seemingly lighthearted imagery and what was done at the international event, it evades scrutiny while embedding deeply divisive and harmful narrative into public discourse. This not only escalates tensions, but also legitimizes antisemitic sentiments, making it a subtle yet insidious threat. That's what that was meant to do, and that is what it did, and that's why it's so difficult. And then the fact that it was placed on the CCSD website did nothing to help the political tensions that is called, and the frustration, and indeed, the threats that the Jewish community are feeling here. So Gandhi said that children are not born to hate, but if we can learn to hate, then we can also learn to love. And I think that's something that we need to be teaching our students. And I understand that your meeting with the AJC, I would strongly advocate that you also have me at that meeting. We, I train law enforcement personnel, I train mayors, I train school boards. Can I have one extra minute, please?
Can I have a motion for an additional minute, please? All in favor?
Thanks. And I, you know, I feel for you. This is not an easy thing to navigate, but it's something that I think you need more voices than just the AJC to understand what's happening here and to understand how to advocate appropriately within the schools. So I'm giving myself to you for my expertise. I live this every single day, 24 hours a day. I do not sleep because I see a lot. I've been to Israel. I know what happens. I think that this is something that, there's a lot of tension, and it's something that we really need to work together to try to, try to combat. So thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Melissa. I have two children in the school district. When we send our children to school, we entrust their care...
Melissa, would you mind stepping forward just a little bit more so we can hear you better? Thank you.
When we send our children to school, we entrust their care to the district educators and district administrators. At home, we teach our children to be stand-up citizens. When there was an item that could be seen as hurtful at International Day, where were the adults? How did not one volunteer, not one teacher, not one administrator speak up effectively? This, to me, is terrifying. One thoughtful adult could have de-escalated the situation and created a teaching moment for all. Where were the role models? Where were the upstanders? Who was there for our children? If this happened at a time or in a place without social media, we wouldn't be here speaking up for our children when no one else did. Thank you.
My name is Eli Benson. I have one, one girl in middle school and another soon. So I was at the Nova Festival, so I saw the remnants of what happened on October 7th. And I also spend a lot of time helping wounded soldiers in Israel. It's not my day job, but I'll tell you that I don't know all the details of what went on in Seven Bridges, but I'm very happy my daughter doesn't go to Seven Bridges, and she goes to Bell. You know, my, I think any Jewish person's first impression of that is indoctrination. And I'm sure you're aware, but we have a new administration. There are now, there are now new federal laws that we have to comply with. And one of those laws is basically, I'll read it to you, and it's on the website, ndei.org. "The US Department of Education is committed to ensuring all students have access to meaningful learning free of divisive ideologies and indoctrination." And I would just like to say that, you know, this is a, this is a website where parents can actually make complaints and let the federal government know what's going on. So I wouldn't be surprised if parents like myself made comments. Thank you.
My name is Tim Clemm, resident and father of a handful of kids who have been and still are in the school district. This is such a divisive issue. I impeach upon you to please be bold. You've heard both sides virulently pro-this and pro-that, and there's a lot of us who understand the nuance, who understand there's, there's a balance that needs to be made. Every single child, every single child needs to feel safe, not just the ones with this religion or that religion. Every child needs to feel safe here, and a hell of a lot of them don't. Don't be afraid to educate them. These are complex issues. We all know this. I throw out the arguments that our kids are too young, they need to be protected. I mean, yes, common sense, they need to be protected. I didn't know until sitting here for an hour and a half how divisive a watermelon is. I get that education by learning, and then I still come up with my own opinion. Our kids need to come up with their own opinions, too. Some of their opinions may, some of their opinions absolutely do differ from their parents. I'm living and breathing proof of that. But still, it's your job to educate our kids and manage the educators of our kids. You cannot take one side in this and say, "Well, he who complains loudest is going to win, win the argument, and then we're just going to rip down the signs and the images that offend a few." Talk through the offense. Why are you offended? That's how I learn, by having these conversations. Our kids are old enough to handle this, too. Don't treat them like babies. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Barrett Flom. I don't want to take away from the important conversations that are happening tonight about International Day. However, I couldn't let slide something that was said during the budget presentation. I think that it is very offensive to imply or state that we are better because we have a lower classification rate than the rest of New York State. I think it actually shows that we need to do more work in our school district classifying. We have wonderful teachers, and they do a wonderful job of helping students, but I think that when we see things like a bubble in the fourth grade, that maybe we should be asking questions about why that bubble exists, especially in light of the statistics with our classification rate, particularly things like whether the administration's pushing people to not seek referrals or things like that, and what the underlying issues are with our classification rate. Again, I'm sorry to take away from the conversation that's happening with International Day, but that's also important.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Have a good night.
Hi. I know everyone's ready to go home. My name is Debbie Greshman. I'm a Greeley alum and a parent in the district. Thank you, guys. I know this is a really tough conversation. I've had the chance to talk to some of you and many in the room, but I just wanted to say, kind of in closing, there's a lot of emotions, but I think the fact today that many in the room who rushed to speak first, and then there were a bunch of people who waited patiently and listened, and then the people who rushed to speak first left before hearing what the other side had to say, speaks louder than any of the words maybe I could have said earlier tonight, and is exactly the point we've been trying to make. So I wanted to close on that, and a very smart person in the room helped me form that thought. Thank you.
I'll keep this very brief. I'm Cliff Cohn. I'm the father of two children in the districts. I came here to listen tonight but felt compelled to speak. I'm always willing to listen to other views and assess their worth. That's what I was taught. In the marketplace of ideas, we must weigh the facts, separate fact from fiction, and draw our own conclusions based on the available evidence. What I find profoundly disappointing is that while I and others here seem very willing to listen, there are some in our community who don't afford us the same courtesy. How can we move forward if we aren't even willing to listen and entertain a differing viewpoint? That's not education. That's not neighborly interaction. That's not an exchange of ideas. That's closed-minded, old-school fascism. And I'll call it out from anyone, anytime, anyplace. Thank you.
Okay. So to try to round this out, I'm going to try something, because it occurred to me while I was listening, just to try to recap what we would like to see from the district. I'm going to list off some of the things, some of these things Dr. Ackerman already said in her report, but then maybe there's another thing or two, and we'll see if people So one is, you know, kind of continue looking into the events of last week, getting to the bottom of what's happened, assessing whether or not the policies that we have put in place have been violated or not, and then what the recourse should be, which as Dr. Ackerman kind of alluded to, might mean policy adjustments or some other action. That seems like one. Another one is, and this was pre-planned, so Dr. Ackerman and I are going to go see the PTA executive leadership tomorrow. I intend to ask them about this event and how we can do better, and I would hope that you would do that with me tomorrow. I think the social media angle is another one. Meeting with the folks who do the social media for us, ensuring that, again, they're adhering to our guidelines. Maybe there's additional training needed. I would leave it to you to assess kind of what's, what the shortcomings are there. And then you already mentioned, you know, doing some short-term adjustments to events that are coming up. Those are the set that I wrote down, coming out of everything that we've discussed. Did I miss anything, guys, that you would also want to see happen?
Well, I, I mean, to the last two speakers' points, I think getting the poster board and then sort of explaining why some of that content material would be offensive to Jewish people, and having that dialogue would be worthwhile, except they make their points and leave. So I'm not sure that they're willing to actually engage in that kind of conversation. I think it would be instructive. I think it would be helpful.
But maybe we can test that by reaching out.
Well, I would like that to happen, but I'm skeptical, just given the behavior.
All right. What else? Hillary?
I think there are two things that were raised that could be potentially action items, but truthfully, I may not be fully articulate. It's been a lot, and I'm not, you know, I think that at least one, I think more than one speaker spoke to the fact that we do have policies in place, right? And actually, I think our policies are pretty good. And it's a question of making sure that people are doing the work they need to do at the appropriate times to make sure that those policies are followed, right? And to make sure that the people who have the knowledge to know whether or not something's problematic are the people implementing the policies, right? Because a policy can only be as good as the person implementing it. And not every trigger point or dog whistle is going to be known by everyone. And I don't think that's necessarily a reasonable expectation, but there are people who do, and those should be the people who are implementing the policy. The other thing I just want to say is around the social media piece of this, because, yes, this was posted on social media, but that, in my mind, without debating the merits of social media generally, is almost besides the point, because anything that's happening within our schools should be something that we can post on social media, right? Like, there shouldn't, the fact that, that this one table was highlighted or not highlighted is, as far as I know, just purely accidental, right? And so I think, but there shouldn't be anything that's happening in our schools that we shouldn't be proud to have on our social media. That's the whole point of having it. So to me, like, the fact that this was on the social media is almost...
So would you, would you strike my idea about having folks meet with the social media team as a step that we should do, or...
I mean, I'm maybe not the person who's most in favor of putting efforts against social media anyway, but I think that, I think that it's, it's, I have no problem with doing that, but I think that's not the salient point, because if it's happening in our schools and we're putting stuff on social media, anything that's happening in our schools should be able to be put on the social media.
So I'll say something, Ryan. So as I do with most things, I believe that all these types of conversations and discussions should be happening with the full board. And I know that you're taking the lead as board president, but I'll say as vice president that the more people in the room to have these conversations with is really important, because the more people, they're, they're not only speaking, but they're there to listen and to offer different perspectives. So I encourage you, it doesn't have to be me, but if you're speaking with Christine and you're going to PTA, and you're going to, you know, social media team and all, any of those conversations, you know, you should try to have at least another board member go with you. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
I would just like to add that I think the overwhelming sentiment that we heard today was that people want International Day to continue. They think having multicultural events is the right decision, and everyone just wants it to be in a way that it stays true to its intent, which was to bring us all together. And what happened was, last week was unfortunate, or this week, I'm losing track of days, too. It was unfortunate, and now we have, you know, our community more divided than ever, and it's because we all have differing opinions... And it's because we all have differing opinions on, like you said, a very complex issue. And I think that, to Matt's point, putting our kids first in every single thing we do is what we need to keep going forward, and just making every child feel safe and making every child feel welcome, and whatever we have to do to repair this, we need to do. And just, it's not to not have events, it's to have events in a way that every kid is safe.
Yeah. Any reactions to what we shared?
Of course. But I'd also just like to say, you know, it's really hard to hear families and students and tonight express their anger, their hurt, their frustrations with the district, frustrations with each other. And to be in this space where people feel like this is the place that needs to happen because of what's happened in our schools. And so I hold myself accountable to that as the superintendent. And, you know, my team, our staff are going to keep moving forward and keep engaging in the work and keep doing better because our kids deserve that. And so all of what you've asked for us tonight is beyond expected, and we know that we can do more together, and we will, we're committed to doing that work.
All right. So we'll look forward to hearing progress on these things. Do people need a pause? Okay. So can I have a motion for a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and do the rest of the board's business? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. So can I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
I move. Or I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're up to item three, which is approvals and ratifications. We have 3.1, which is accepting the minutes from the March 5th board meeting. Can I have a motion for 3.1?
I'll move.
I'll move.
All in favor? Okay, then we have first readings of a couple of different policies, so we'll do them one at a time. 3.2 is Policy 3035, Use of School District Trademarks, first reading. So let's have the motion. Well, we don't need a motion. We're just going to talk about it. Yeah. Okay. Tell us, Policy Committee, about the trademark policy.
Want to do it, Kaylee? You want to do it?
Yes, I'm tired. I'm tired.
This one's pretty straightforward. We've discussed its intent previously, but I think, as it says, it's a first reading. The idea is to protect our trademarks and the use of our symbols, and this, we talked about in policy. We know that there are organizations that use our trademarks and symbols, such as the sports boosters, such as Friends of Greeley Theater, there's the PTA, obviously. And so it aligns with our other policies where those, there's a word for them that I'm forgetting, sort of like tangential, school-related organizations have freer permission to use these things, which they've been doing in everyday practice forever. So it protects their ability to use it while making sure that others can't. That's that.
Okay. Questions from anybody? That was pretty clear. Thank you.
So if there are any adjustments, if people could email them to Kaylee, Hillary and I, this is pretty straightforward, so if we don't have any, we might have it up at a future meeting for potential adoption.
Okay. So then we'll go to 3.3, which is Policy 2245, which is about adding an ex officio student member of the board for next year.
So this one's less straightforward, and we won't move as quickly. So as people may or may not know, it is now law that as of July 1st, which is the school year start date for public schools in New York, all school boards in New York State must have a non-voting ex officio student member of the school board. There are some provisions in the law as to who that student must be in terms of they have to be a high school student who's completed at least one year of high school. Definitively, that makes them a sophomore and older. But there's a lot of room for how we want to have, bring that student on board, and there's a lot of things that we are thinking about. And one thing that we spoke about in the Policy Committee is that let's use this as an opportunity to really have this be an educational opportunity for this student and have them really be a resource for us to hear about the students in our buildings and not just have this be a perfunctory thing that we have to do because of law change. So we're trying to do this thoughtfully. We are going to be pushing this out to the community for feedback in the week.
Yes.
And then we're going to have a work session on it, I believe, in two weeks.
On the 26th.
26, which I think is two weeks from now.
Yep.
Maybe. And so we welcome community feedback once you've had the opportunity to look at this policy as it's pushed out in the week, and then we will have a work session, which obviously the community is welcome to attend if they would like to do that.
Hillary, is there a provision or a thought about how to work around, like, a student's, like, course load and, like, accommodating them so that we're not, like, taking up too much of their time?
Yeah. So one thing we talked about, so we've, we've focused on them being at our business meetings, the evening meetings, and they don't have to attend every one, like, we get it. They're at Greeley, it's kind of a busy high school. But also, like, we explicitly said that attendance in the summer is optional. We know our students who might be interested in doing this may or may not be around in the summer. I think we put, you know, we put parameters around their attendance and reporting out that should be manageable for a student and are very explicit in the way we've written that, so students can evaluate if this is something they think they have time for. But, you know, if we have a meeting, you know, occasionally we will have meetings that are not in the evening, and then if it works in their schedule for them to attend and they'd want to, they'd, of course, be welcome, although so many of those meetings are exact anyway, and that is not something the student member would attend, that there shouldn't really be too much of a conflict. But obviously, anybody who would apply for this would have to evaluate whether this is how they want to spend their evenings.
Well, I think also we went back and forth a lot between Christine, Hillary and I in terms of how we were thinking that we would like this to happen, but this is by no means final, as it is our first reading. And also, that is why we are having that work session on the 26th. And I think we decided, though, at the end that it was going to be just regular meetings, right? So the regular business meetings, right? So, yeah, so just, you know, everyone should look through them, and, you know, we can go back and forth on this one.
Do you want us to save our questions for the work session, or do you want us to ask now?
You can ask now.
Did you guys talk about, I know it's a one-year term, but are we putting term limits on this? Would the same student be able to petition for the next year?
They'd have to graduate.
No, I know, but if, let's say the applicant was a sophomore or junior, would you be open to going again this senior year?
I think we have to talk about it. I mean, really, the only legal requirement is that they've been in the high school for one year, so only sophomores, juniors, and seniors can apply.
No, we didn't talk about it.
Okay. And then, I know when I read the document, it said there's going to be a selection committee reads the essays.
Maybe. This is part of our thinking.
This is probably what we need to discuss.
Sounds like we should wait for the-
I will save this all for the work session.
This was the first attempt at how we would do this. We are totally open to any and all ideas.
I think also what we didn't say, it might be helpful, because when we were working on it, we had it sort of, Christine, you divided it up into, like, what's actually law and what is the thinking that, yeah, that we were thinking about. So then you guys also know what, which part of it is the law part, and then it's not. We just can't, yeah.
Okay. I'll save it for the work session.
But that's a good idea, actually, Kaylee. We should probably push out the, like, highlighted version that we saw with the- Yes, yeah.
Okay. You want me to push out the highlighted version in the week?
To the board, all.
To the board, okay. All right.
All right. I think that brings us to four.
I recommend 4.1, Instructional As Presented.
I will move 4.1. Can I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
I recommend 4.2, Non-Instructional As Presented.
I will also move 4.2. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That brings us to item five. This is our Consent Agenda. Use of the Consent Agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Consent Agenda as submitted by the superintendent. We've got 5.1 through 5.6, so a relatively short one for us versus what's typical. We've got a little bit of consulting on here, plus the CSE summaries as usual, electric. Yeah. Does anybody want to pull anything out tonight? Okay. So can I have a motion for 5.1 through 5.6?
I'll move.
All those in favor? Nothing for six or seven, so we're down to eight, 8.1. We're going to acknowledge receipt of the Claims Auditor's Report for February 2025. Can I have a motion for that?
I will move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And motion, Notice of Future Meetings. We'll be here next Tuesday, so not our typical Wednesday, but next Tuesday, March 18th, at 7:00. Actually, we have at 6:15 the work session on Capitol Projects and Security, followed by the typical meeting. We'll be back in the academic commons, and we'll be discussing other aspects of the budget that we haven't gotten to yet. And then on the 26th, work session about the student member of the board and the budget adoption, which means it's time to get to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn at 10:38?
I move.
I will second.
All in favor? Okay. Thanks, everybody.